Meeting everyone today is Wednesday, October 22nd, 2025. This is a meeting of the Gloucester School Committee and we are meeting at Gloucester High School Library. The public is welcome to attend our meetings in person or alternatively through the Zoom link provided on the agenda. The meeting notice will reflect if the meeting is via Zoom only. As amendments to the open meeting law allow, the school committee may continue to hold meetings remotely. Please note, the in-person meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the remote connection. I'll call this meeting to order and state that the mission for Gloucester Public Schools is for all students to be successful engaging. And I ask you to stand and join me for the suite. We usually do a kind of introductions around the table. We'll start with Mike.
Michael Travis, Director of Special Education.
As well as Assistant Superintendent.
And Lieutenant Superintendent, Jeremy McKean, School Committee.
Laura Wilson, School Committee.
Melissa Burns, School Committee.
Kathy Glancy, School Committee.
Bill Malvin, School Committee.
Martina Fracchiolo, Executive Board President.
Jessica Harvey, Gloucester High School Treasurer.
Stephanie W. C. Lee, Executive Secretary.
First item of business is oral communications. The public shall have the opportunity at every regular school committee meeting to be heard under all communications. Oral Communications shall allow any resident who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to the school committee business to appear before the school committee, state their problem without debate, and the matter may be referred to the proper subcommittee. For items that are on the agenda, members of the public may address the committee with the permission of the chair. Persons speaking under all communications shall be limited to three minutes each and shall submit a copy of their prepared communication to the Executive Secretary. If there's anybody here that would like to hear or online that would like to speak. You're here, we have the podium, and if you're online, you can raise your hand.
No one online is raising.
Okay.
Sure, Dan Graham, One Bigford Way, it's a relatively quiet night tonight, I'm excited about that. Yeah, I just wanted to share with the committee tonight that O'Malley is kind of bringing life back in something called the Sales Card, which is a way of recognizing service, acceptance, integrity, leadership. And it's a way of acknowledging, rather than criticizing people and catching people being good. And so recognizing that we are coming up on an anniversary of a difficult time in our community. I just wanted tonight to hand out two sales cards to people in this room, just in kind of honor of that that way of acknowledging success. So I would like to give out two, one I would like to give one to Laura Wilson. Laura, I appreciated during your recent debate, your acknowledging of our challenges in our community and your integrity to put our community above hard times and be willing to come out and have those hard conversations again. So I wanted to acknowledge that that shows a lot of integrity and leadership that despite challenges, you are standing up for what you believe is right. I also want to give one to our Superintendent Amy Pasco, or Assistant, sorry.
Slip of the tongue.
Assistant Superintendent Amy Pasco, just to acknowledge that leadership requires being at the top level and doing a lot of management stuff. And some days where if our principal's out sick, somebody has to come in and roll up their sleeves and get in the weeds and pick up a walkie-talkie and run to classrooms and manage problems. And to see somebody working at both those levels, I just wanted to acknowledge, Amy, that I very much appreciate having you down in the weeds with me and being somebody I can look to at the top for more global problems. So in terms of O'Malley, and I don't represent O'Malley here, just me, but in terms of my ability to give out a sales card for service, acceptance, integrity, leadership, leading to the success of the community in Gloucester, which I love, I'd just like to give you both the sales card.
Thank you. Seeing no one else here standing and no hands up online, we will move on to recognitions. Are you bent to anything lately? I haven't, no. Okay.
I guess I would have one. Mine would be to the student body and to the this particular year, the football program, there's a lot of excitement around the football team and about the crowds that have been getting down there. Student section has been outstanding down there, and also the band, the high school band that does a great job performing at the game, so. Great job, a lot of enthusiasm down there, it's great to see.
Laura. I just want to recognize everyone who worked so hard to create the Beeman Trunkard feat last week, which was really over the top in some ways. Really well attended, lots of cars, extremely big decorations and mechanized. So I just want to, it's a lot of work by the PTO and by staffs and by families, and it creates a lovely sense of school spirit.
West Parish also had a wonderful trick-or-treat, a truck-or treat as well, and thanks to the same efforts by the administration. And I mean, you know, the staff and the parents and the PTO. It's always a highlight of, you know, Halloween, my son came back to his elementary school after being in the school for a couple of years, he always liked to tag along with his younger sister, so.
And I wouldn't want to leave out East Beth, because they had one down at Boudreaux Field, and it was enormous. And the PTO, the PTO did a great job with that. Just a great event, so just echo what Laura and Pete said.
Next week, Gloucester High School Student Advisory Council, we have Martina Fracchiolo and Jessica Harvey, thank you for being here.
Happy to be here. And to start, on Friday, we have our annual Think Think Photo at 1:00 in Fieldhouse at Gloucester High School. This is the 20th and final year of this tradition. And Friday, we had our Think Think Football Game, and our NHS President and Vice President sold more shirts to donate to breast cancer awareness. And it was also Senior Night, where we honored senior football players, cheerleaders, and band members. We also had a GHS Alumni Table, where alumni were able to come in and sign and have a name tag. And at halftime, we crowned our homecoming King and Queen, Cameron Olson and Emma Kara-Pachosa. And then before the football game, we had our pep rally that was planned by the executive board, and we had some new games like the Pizza Box Knockout, Bumper Balls, and who would it be?
Currently, the NHS is funding their community service project, as well as working on starting back up the tutoring program. Along with that, the credit recovery will be happening after the first term ends, so we're hoping to get more underclassing. Some seniors are selling Halloween candy grams during lunches to raise money for their class. Seniors are selling semi-formal tickets until this Friday. Seniors also have a bake sale at GHS on Election Day. Your book is doing a Chalka fundraiser on November 29th. Volleyball and boys soccer just had two very successful fundraisers. The evacuation rooms are being renovated currently and are going to be very nicely. And lastly, the boys soccer team is doing a fundraiser today in Chalka. Thank you.
I do have a question, which maybe you can help us. I need to share something first, it's pretty sweet. Did you see that screen, Megan?
We can't see, they can't.
So this is a picture of the pep rally, the surfing contest. Can you explain that exactly? Because it's not clear from this phone what's going on.
So we ask each group, get, is it 10 or 11 people?
It was 10.
Yeah, we get 10 people, and you pick one person to be on top of the table. And then you have the other, the rest of the people on the floor, and they have to like roll the table across. So like, once the, like, the table gets past you, you have to get up and run over, so it keeps going, you have to get to each side of the mat.
So go all the way across the mat?
In the back.
With as many surfers as, or, you know, might be, you might have a new surfer as the thing goes on.
No, it's just more.
Oh, just keep going. Is the surfer standing?
No, I wouldn't recommend, I was thinking of trouble.
All right, great, all right. So thank you, that wasn't clear to me, and I was not going to be able to explain it, so I appreciate it. Excellent, all right.
Okay. All right. You're welcome to stay, we understand if you need to go. Thank you for coming.
Thank, can I actually, I'm sorry, can I ask a question? Oh, I was framed by the National Art Honor Society, which is really fun, do you know what that is? Does anyone?
So it's one of the fundraisers that they're doing, where people nominate people that get framed, and basically they put picture frames in the lawn of their houses. And to get it removed, you have to make a donation to the Honor Society.
Yeah, but it's, but it's super creative, I just want to say, because there's all these framed artwork. It's really cool, and it's surprising, right, to come home and have there be like all these framed things. And it's not always clear what it is, it was my daughter who explained to me what I had to do. It wasn't completely clear. But I thought it was a great way to promote art and fundraising for National Arts Honor Society.
Yes, it really is.
It's a good way to be framed or something.
I got framed.
Excellent. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next item of business is the Consent Agenda, does anybody have any items they would like removed? Move that we approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Next, deliberation on education issues and superintendent's report, we will start with this update on the superintendent's selection process. So we had two sessions yesterday for Meet the Candidate, Amy Pascarello, at East Veterans School. We had a couple of parents attend the session at 3:30, and a nice showing of teachers at 6:00. They are facilitated by Alicia Mallon, our representative from the Massachusetts School, or Massachusetts Association of School Committees. Next up will be the panel interviews. Monday at 3:30 will be the teachers and staff, and that's at 3:30 here in the Gloucester High School Library. Next is the administrators, both school and city, at 6:00 PM, also here. On Tuesday, we have the student panel, which is October 28th at 3:30 PM in the high school. And at 6:00, we have parents, and parents' guardians and community members at 6:00 PM. Members of the stakeholder groups that are not necessarily on the panel are certainly welcome to come and participate by being present and also completing feedback forms, their feedback forms were offered yesterday. And so we hope, you know, not just the interview panelists will submit feedback, but anybody attending will also be here present to to hear directly the questions and the answers, and have some feedback on that. After that, we have, the school committee will do its formal interview. Here during our regular school committee meeting, we will do that early in our meeting, our first item, pretty much, and that's at 6:00 PM, November 5th. And then it will move to November 10th, where we will have a special meeting to deliberate and vote against to the feedback we've gotten and have a discussion on that decision, November 10th, at 6:00 PM. I have a question. Sure. When will the school committee see results from the feedback? Alicia's putting it together, so there's just feedback last night. Yeah. So she'll put that together, and she's going to give us feedback kind of by title of event. Okay. So we will have that next week. So we'll have all the feedback before we interview. Absolutely, okay, absolutely, and that feedback may inform the questions we choose to ask, if there's things we want to probe more, or yeah, yeah, just how can form how we will, how we individually will kind of come up with our formulated questions and which ones we choose to ask, or ask something different.
She said that you would get the Monday, the feedback from the Monday and Tuesday interview panels by the end of the week, which then gives you, you know, still on Wednesday to view that.
And can we just say again, dates and times for next week's meetings, I think we can't say it enough? So, no, I mean, so, so teachers and staff are Monday, October 27th at 3:30 here, the GHS Library.
Should I just send?
No, I know, but we can't say it enough. Then Monday, that same evening, Monday, the 27th at 6:00 PM here in this GHS Libraries, administrators, including the city. And then on Tuesday, the student panel will be meeting here at GHS at 3:30 in the library. And Tuesday, the 28th, again at 6:00 PM, parents, guardians, and community members will be meeting here at 6:00 PM in the library. And again, any members of those groups can come, even if you're not on the stakeholder panel.
And they attend the group that they're associated with.
Right.
Yeah.
And we have been sending out emails to families and staff. And I know they're getting seen, because people are commenting that they are getting a lot of emails, so at least they're being seen. Okay. And there was an article today, I believe, that had all the same details in the newspaper. Okay, next is the superintendent's report.
Great, so as we say here at the Gloucester Schools, everything matters, everybody belongs, and every student learns. So just to go over some updates around our schools, so Gloucester Preschool, a lot going on there as always. There's an example on the left, is Miss Heather's class is, actually on both sides, Miss Heather's class is learning with the fall season. So you see some students here enjoying their fall exploration in their science center. As part of what they're doing is they're measuring, they're weighing, examining sort of items from nature that are specific to fall, using magnifying glasses, scale, ruler, et cetera, stuff. But they're also then reading about it, so reading Leaf Man, which is a book about how leaves blow in the wind and travel around. And then, because it's a full-body experience, a full-body experience in preschool, they're also building their own leaf people in animals in their art center as part of a connection, an extension of the literacy work. So all things fall in Miss Heather's class these days, so really appreciate her sharing that. Also, a couple of examples, gross motor time, also known as sort of, you know, play and recess and sort of stuff. In the gym sometimes, also outside, at the playground these days. Even on the playground right now, but gross motor time, which means like big movements, running around, playing, building with these giant, or retro set of things happen in the gym, or I guess they call them waffle blocks, sorry, waffle blocks, also outside, but we're rebuilding the playground, so. And then on the right there, again, a lot of themes here in the preschool, and this is about you know, reading and then doing an activity related to the reading, so reading out loud spookily to Square Pumpkin, and then kids making their own square pumpkin, so. Perhaps brings folks back to some of your wonderful days back in preschool of all of us. Beeman, so here on the left-hand side, like so many of our teacher teams are doing this time of year, and have been doing for a little while. There's the five, the fifth grade team doing their fall data meeting. So you see a variety of roles there, you see instructional coach, you see Taiwan teacher, you see the classroom teachers, all working together, looking at some data. And also on the right then, they had a walk and bike to school day at Beeman, they have kids there walking and riding their they're walking or riding their bikes to school. Also in Beeman, Grade 1, there's Miss Antilipo, having her morning meetings, or just showing us some scenes around our schools. And then again, the combination of academics, but also fun. Beeman had a Wacky Wednesday, and the theme on this Wacky, or the most recent Wacky Wednesday, I should say, was Superhero Day. So you see a lot of superheroes there, okay, I didn't realize there were that many superheroes around, and they're right here in Gloucester, excellent. Plum Cove had their first Mystery Day, Mystery Days at Plum Cove are called sort of by surprise. Similar to the sales cards that Mr. Graham was talking about tonight, they use caught contributing cards at Plum Cove, sorry. And when they get to about 500, they have a Mystery Day, and that's a Surprise Day. They may have an assembly to celebrate those students earning caught cards, or may also add an extra recess and other ways of celebrating kids really making a full effort to have a great, positive, and warm and welcoming culture there at Plum Cove, so awesome work there. And then here's some examples as well, the PTO hosted author Maureen Harrington and her dog Ivy. Ivy's a dog who lost the use of her legs at age 3, and now has a wheelchair. And her books are about Ivy and Ivy's experiences. And then on the right, on the right there, this is a fifth grade class, this is Ray Scola and Carrie Donahue's class, they've been doing weekly circles, which is a way of community building, excuse me, among their students. But this is after Miss Donahue worked on a training that Amy Cam led and put into place with Suffolk University and a bunch of folks, I think there've been two or three cohorts now, 20-plus folks have been trained in community circles. Kids really love it, it not only helps create community in the classroom, which then can be also be leaned on when you have difficulties in classroom, you know, from a strong foundation, that the circles help to build. And then also, your users among staff, our district leadership meetings always are centered and start and use a circle format. And it's a good structure to allow everyone to have a say and then be heard. But also, it's a great way of dealing challenging issues as well, so. Really appreciate, with the Scola there, Miss Donahue, and many others are doing around the district, using those circles in a variety of ways. East Veterans, they have had a science contest to name the bus loop in the drop-off area after a student, I believe. I'm not sure how this came about exactly, I know it was Mr. Fusco's idea, that's expected, but I'm not sure how they named them. But so for the year, the bus loop in the drop-off area will be named after a student, and they'll change each year. If it's temporary naming to sort of get folks excited about doing things that are safe and proper way. And then on right there, again, the team meetings, this is special education teachers, you know, meeting together, this could be including teachers and also as well as program teachers, working with, you know, under Tree and Zutara's leadership, and also I'm sure with Chrissy Lambert and Mr. Fusco, working around, you know, the successes, challenges, difficult students that they're meeting about, so something you see very, happen very commonly throughout our district schools. West Parish is highlighting Augmentative and Alternative Communication Awareness Month. Our augmentative and alternative communication devices are something that are very commonly used in our schools among students who have complex communication needs, and it's a sort of an iPad-looking thing, device. And through, and it helps students who are non-verbal or who become more verbal communicate, share their thoughts, their needs, their ideas, they're teaching classmates, something we've really experienced, and students have experienced, is as they get, learn how to use these, their freshman, class can be much more successful for them, partially because if it's very difficult to communicate, their frustration will be quite high. They have thoughts, they have feelings, they have things they want to share, it's hard to, because of their complex communications challenges. But with the AAC devices supported by our staff or pairs or teachers, they can really develop communication skills that help them
Yes.
both learn and On the right-hand side, again, a combination of, you know, real learning there on the left, and also learning here in a more physical way. The Whalemobile, once it gets to turn to West Parish, if you remember, this is a life-size inflatable whale that sparked curiosity and also inspired stewardship among our kids at West Parish. And then this is a look into Miss Chaffler's second grade class, they need a reader's fee or performance. So they take a section of the end of a book, in this case, the middle yellow leaf, and they, in like one afternoon, okay, they practice reading with expression, they rehearse together, and then, and they make creative decisions on how to do that, and how to present it to their classmates, and then they perform to their class. So they're in groups of kids, and they're all doing the same work, but of course, it comes out differently depending on the group of kids that are organized. So really appreciate that, again, emerge of experience around reading and literacy, but then also expressive communication and leverage. Good stuff. O'Malley Middle School here, they had their September Student of the Month, Juliana De Mayo. Receiving her award there from Mr. Mastandria, and having her picture taken for the Student of the Month Golden Forum, so you have a few months. And the sixth grade students, this is in the lab, doing their hands-on experiments, exploring exothermic reactions, those are reactions that produce heat. Yes. There you go. And one thing that is great with the hands-on experiments that we do in Science Center at O'Malley is the sort of the engagement, but also the surprise that often kids have, when they either create something, build something, or see something react. And certainly, they're creating heat and releasing gas here, which causes the bags to expand as the gas goes into them. Sounds like they had some audible surprise, enjoy seeing that happen, that's pretty cool, fun chemistry. And Gloucester High School, this is the surfing event at the pep rally, which went through before, so you guys hit the lowdown on that. And then the GS Gender Equity STEM Club is added again. I want to say the fifth year, I'm not quite sure about that, at least the fifth year, so 52 students were there at the first meeting of the year. And they got a, they were, they met with and learned from and heard Nicole Carter-Quinn speak. She's the Executive Director of the Women in Public Policy Program at the Harvard Kennedy School, that's the Graduate School of Policy and Government there at Harvard. So I really appreciate the leadership from Mahan Vidal and our science teacher Eric Lee, who've been leading that for years now. Really appreciate, and their ability to organize and have kids experience, have experiences inside and outside of school related to STEM, and making sure that, you know, and also learning about women and access into the STEM fields. Teacher program, not only are they up and running and gearing up for Sound and Music on November 20th, 21st, and 22nd, but they're also out in the community, they're at the Mayor's Halloween Party October 18th, and you can see doing a nice job of of painting faces for kids, and I, I mean, that's like number one, like booth, I'm sure. I'm sure there's a long line for them, but really appreciate our high school students always being out in the community, always helping out families and kids, especially when our older kids are working with younger kids, so another great example of that there. This carpentry storage unit has its first level on, here's a first level, the, and building up the walkway in tonight, they have a, the all the studs for a whole wall, already built, they built that inside, and then bring it out, and you know, then, then we'll, you know, erect it in on top of the foundation there, the first floor, and if you remember, is this storage unit is being built from funds that were donated by Ruth Pino in honor of her husband. And it'll allow us to open up more space in the carpentry shop, because we'll be able to store materials outside in a weather-protective environment. It helps us store them for the long term and short term, and also store them away where they won't get damaged, that's going along. And then here's the last one, preschool playground update, there, they, I mentioned the BNF last week, they'll be starting on Monday, they did, even despite a little rainy pad. And as you can see on the right-hand side there, I think that was, that was yesterday, the slides are in, and there are a few other elements that are already in. They're really rolling along on that, and getting that, it looks like, weather cooperate the rest of the week. And so we remain on schedule, we're rebuilding, we're opening a great new preschool playground. A lot going on, obviously, hard to capture all of it, don't try and capture smattering of the combination of things that are happening across all our schools, so. Our next presentation, if we can invite the O'Malley folks up here, and we'll take part in the presentation, great. Good to see a lot of folks here from O'Malley, teachers, administrators, I'm gonna slide over, just giving a moment while we have them join us. Mike, how you doing?
Maybe a little drop more down. Again, we can't have everyone.
Alright. Uh so really appreciate uh the O'Malley team, part of the, you know, O'Malley team being here. Um and I'll let Mike and others introduce us on the moment, but just really appreciate. So what you're getting tonight is a real uh full, very full update on a lot of progress and happenings that are going on in the school. It's really sort of meant to give us the committee and uh the public a full update on many of the real things, many of the things that are happening, happening in O'Malley. Uh they're off with a strong start this year, I'd say, from everything I've heard from staff and administrators and and teachers and and whatnot. Um uh so hang in there. There's a lot of information. She has hard to capture all the school is doing. Um they're gonna take a stab at it, but you'll see, they'll they'll describe the different domains they'll update you on, but really appreciating uh the team being here and helping folks understand some of the great work that's happening in O'Malley and how you guys are always working.
Uh can, should we just go down the line to introduce? So Mike Tyson, Principal at O'Malley Innovation Middle School.
Kate Robertson, Curriculum and Instruction Coordinator at O'Malley.
Liam Bradley, Special Ed Coordinator at O'Malley.
Caitlin Gass, Sixth Grade Assistant Principal.
Dennis Riley, Seventh Grade Assistant Principal.
Ryan Adessa, Eighth Grade Assistant Principal.
Michelle Bailey, Math Program Leader and Eighth Grade Assistant Teacher.
Thank you all for being here.
Folks, we're just squeezing and see if we can get Michelle and Amy entertained later, okay? Can we back to that?
Okay, great. Um first of all, thank for having us here. Uh you know, this is a nice opportunity to go through a number of different things that are happening at O'Malley, have happened at O'Malley, um and will be happening at O'Malley, right? And uh let's just give a a bigger picture, if you will, than sometimes what we're able to give and if it's just a data update or 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 um, you know, just what we're we're uh hearing about in superintendent support. So um so, yeah, let's go. So um just kind of overview of some of the things we're gonna be talking about today. Um some of the sort of structural improvements uh that we've made uh around curriculum, special education programming, some overall school structures. We're gonna hit on our recent MCAS and STAR three sixty data. Um and then we're gonna go share some just O'Malley highlights. I think sort of the data's uh super important here, STAR, MCAS, you know, uh we, me and Kate have been here referencing that a number of times now. And that's a snapshot of what a student's life at O'Malley is all about, right? So we wanted to make sure we've got a chance to really see um some of the great things and great opportunities that the students have, and we're gonna do that through the lens of our core values and our instructional focus. We want to take a look at sort of the way we're gonna progress through this is using our recent O'Malley Climate and Culture Survey results. Uh the vocal uh survey is given to eighth graders at uh the conclusion of their science MCAS. Uh vocal stands for Views of Climate and Learning. We've we've uh mentioned this here before. Just starting real high level here, what you're seeing is the three broad categories, which again, we've talked about uh engagement, safety and environment. We'll get a little bit, we're gonna unpack those a little bit as we go through this. The top gray box is the state um and state averages in those categories. And we're seeing down below that is O'Malley. So just one thing that we want to note is our students are reporting favorable responses. Um right in line with the state average of how the rest of the middle school students in Massachusetts are viewing their experience in middle school. I think we can collectively agree as educators on the side of the table with the state average, us being in line with that, it still could be better, okay? Um but you know, we want to just sort of see where we stood with the state. Great. So what we wanted to look at here is not just how we compare to the state, how do we compare to ourselves? Alright, and that's, I think, an important thing to look at. So what you're looking at is just longitudinally, um these top two tables, uh most favorable and favorable, we'd like to see those numbers increasing. And the somewhat favorable and least favorable, the idea is that we see those numbers decreasing over time. We go to last year's uh results and you can see over time, we are really ticking in the right direction. Obviously, still work to be done, but we want to be moving in the right direction and and uh holistically, we are. Um you see, we've gone from in twenty twenty-one, twenty-one percent uh favorable ratings up to thirty-five percent uh last year.
Mike, does this, so this slide ties back into the the first slide. And what this is looking at, this is actually, so the the first one is the index across the whole entire school, those three domains. But this is looking at is each student, depending on their answers, falls into one of the categories in terms of their view, overall view of the climate. Most favorable, favorable, somewhat, or at least favorable. And so this is the percentage of students that are in the favorable, in, you know, in the purple row there. Most favorable, favorable combined, you know. So you think about this percentage of students who are there. And so as Mike is saying, you want the, you want the top two categories, which are captured or combined into the purple. You know, they're also listed by themselves below, going up, okay, nice from twenty-three to thirty-five last year, okay? That's for eighth graders. And then least favorable, which is the bottom line going down. And as you can see, went from thirty to twenty percent. So you know, that's, those are significant improvements, basically, you know, significant changes. So that gives you sort of a sense across. This is eighth grade, um sort of the 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 overall view of how kids are receiving climate at O'Malley.
Right. So now let's get into some of the work we've done with curriculum adoptions, okay? Um working in ELA, math, social studies. Taking on, uh who presented on this before, the big lift uh to do that, and we're sort of still in process. Um but we want to see sort of where that's panning out for us. Quick history here, I won't go through every bullet, um but the process did start with ELA in twenty twenty-one, uh twenty twenty-two school year. Sort of an iterative process of evaluating different curricula, um teachers collaborating, evaluating. Uh we then moved on through that process to math, uh and then most recently uh our associate department looking at investigating history, again, all of this aligning um across uh the curriculum material that we're doing, high, high quality uh resources and um with in collaboration with the team teams, um doing what they think is gonna be the best curriculum for the students moving forward. None are perfect. Um but we wanted to make sure we found some that works for us. Um and those, those three departments are in different stages of implementation. ELA being in full uh implementation in their second year, uh math first full year, uh and uh as well as uh social studies this year.
That's a, that's something here every year, past three years, including this year.
Yeah, I just want to also just jump in and really commend all the teachers for their hard work in this process of implementation. I know we've got Michelle here um leading the math department, but you know, it it's a lot to get the new curriculum materials, to learn it, to have the PD. And and I am happy to say we've had ongoing PD. And as I go through this slide, um we have some, some great opportunities um coming up this year. You know, for PD and then the ongoing vertical team meetings, um where there's this constant dialogue, okay, you know, now, especially with, you know, ELA. This is our third year of implementation, um decimals, it's our second. Um now we're looking at, okay, like, you know, maybe changes based on the data that we've been analyzing. The MCAS scores, which we'll touch on later, kind of our process, but we really go through, we look at what actual standards uh we're not addressing the way we'd like to. And then, okay, well, how did the new curriculum address that? What do we need to do? Where do we need to supplement? And um and also um you know, in in commending the teachers, the students are really having to think for their own, like, all of these programs are really designed to get students thinking more critically, where there isn't necessarily one right way to get it, especially with decimals. But, you know, people are sharing their ways, you know, you got it this way. Well, is there another way to arrive at that same answer? Really getting kids to conceptually understand the math and dialogue about it um is different, especially, you know, in those school years. But that's been really neat. Um with Amplify, so if I kind of go through just where we're at. Um one of the changes we really saw a need for with Amplify ELA is that it was a lot of short stories and short excerpts. And the reason for that is that it's a really high-level rigorous text. Um they want us to, you know, be reaching, having the kids reaching above where their level might be. And that feels like rigorous grade level. Then um we realized they needed to be reading for one hold. And Amplify has one novel per grade level that they really kind of go in depth with. Um but we felt a need to put in more of that independent reading and bring it back. So um we'll touch upon that later, but that's one of the highlights that we'll talk about. Another thing I want to sort of plug in for is that in the absence of having a librarian, we've been working to reopen the library. Um we're not there yet. We have had like this soft opening. If teachers want to bring their class, I can check out the books. I have to add them in a book at a time. Um it's been a long process. Sometimes people, they're like, oh, are you the new librarian? But um I will be, um one of the parent updates, looking for parents who want to volunteer and come in um during the day, possibly, I think it's gonna be around our lunch times and learn the system. I believe our system is the same one that East Vets uses. So if you're a parent who's volunteered at East Vets, it is library world, so it should be a similar process. Um and so that's really great. Um so kids can start checking out books. And then this year, we've had some PD focus on engagement, which ties in with our instructional focus um that we've been developing through our instructional leadership. From math, we have a new paper-based um curriculum that has not arrived yet. However, it is on the way. Um but we do have, they've kind of made some updates with the curriculum. The teachers have been really great, have been flexible and adapting um in the absence of these materials. So I just want to um you know, shout shout out the math teachers because that hasn't been easy. Um but we, um the new paper-based materials mirror the digital platform. So this enables a lesson to be done on paper so that the kids aren't always tied to their computer. It also enables, you know, if the kid has lost their code or for some reason doesn't have access to it that day. Um they can just follow along on the paper lesson, which is great. And if they enter put this down, but they they are able to um access the materials.
To be fair, most of the country. Amazon Web Services went down.
We're also beginning uh more of the vertical alignment between the elementary schools and the high school, um the middle school, obviously, Sandberg Street in the middle. Um but we, Michelle and I have gone to some of the coaches' meetings with the elementary and we're um looking forward to dialoguing with the high school as well. And then we have a coaching day scheduled in, I think, January um or February with a decimals consultant who will come in and they came last year too, and they observe our teaching. And then they give us feedback that we can improve our practice in different categories. Um Investigating History is our new history curriculum. We piloted it last year. We did about two, one unit, I think, at grade six and grade seven. Grade eight is civics, so that doesn't have any change in the course here. Um but the investigating history is very um there's a lot of looking at artifacts and primary sources and the kids really have to there the history. So I can think of like traditionally when I went to school and learned history, the teacher was standing up in front of the room. Here's like the slideshow, here's all the facts, the places, names you have to memorize. This is more, here's a document, let's figure out the context of which is written. Um it's very literary-based, um lots of literacy skills are applied, lots of historical thinking is applied through these units. And it's a really great way of, you know, being able to explore multiple viewpoints in history and having the kids develop these historical concepts on their own without just being told the information. We all know we learn better when we're exploring and we're doing things with what we're learning. Um so that is exciting and it's also a lot of work, um for both the teachers and the students because it is a lot of thinking. In science, this is the re with our science coordinator, Amy, who's down at the end of the table. Um it's great having her and Steve um in the building. Dave's over in the audience. Um we do so many cancer labs and as you see, like, I put in some pictures for all of our, you know, sales values and an art instructional focus and the stuff we do in science fits every single category. And the kids are out there. I mean, if I'm walking around with my camera for the small updates, there's always something so you can take a picture of that's really cool and awesome. Um they have built-in PD for science teachers all the time. Um there's always great moves going on in science. And then the other thing to highlight is that Amy and I are doing um curriculum alignment with our PE and health curriculum this year. So we've had our first meetings with our PE teachers and health teachers. And we're just kind of getting started with that process.
The next slide, sorry, can I just ask a question?
Yeah, an amplified question.
Um you're about to talk about this, this is great. I did a question about writing.
Yeah.
Um I know that Amplify is something that can be scaffolded and all these, you know, it work in different ways. How much writing, like actual writing, are the kids getting?
So there is a lot of writing. I I hesitate to say that it's a time that writes daily, but I think every lesson has a ten-minute writing prompt. And it's a text-based prompt where the kids have to meet the claim and support the claim based on text that they read that day. So it's a very high, usually a high-level thinking question where they're going back in the text, finding evidence to support it, and then they have to explain their answer. So there's more writing in Amplify that way than we may have traditionally had, just because it's very structured, every lesson proved. There's also essays, so every unit has an essay at the end that is critical, you know, it's usually some sort of argumentative prompt. So it might be like in Frankenstein, was the creature human or not? And then, you know, they could argue either way is correct. Um they have to find the evidence to support their claim and write, you know, like the essay.
And can teachers choose to do the prompts or not, or to do the ten-minute free write or not? I mean, is that the teacher chooses how to use the curriculum, right?
So they should be doing it with fidelity. So they should be doing the prompts or it's, you know, all seventh grade teachers have chosen to do that prompt or not.
I see, okay.
Um we also are on the hunger lesson pathway, so it depends on, you know, if maybe they've decided to do an extra part of a lesson, so they're not doing the whole of the right. But we will get to writing later because writing is a school goal this year, so it's a little
I just wanted to ask them a question too. Can you go back to the slide before this? So um on the Amplify ELA, the independent reading of novels, I heard you mention that the library's not open and didn't hear what was said afterwards about papers. I think you said you would bring kids to the library.
Okay, so.
I'm just concerned that you don't have enough access to books.
So yeah, I said there's a soft open. So people, there are classes coming. If a teacher wants to bring their class to check out books.
Okay.
They are, and for the, which the next slide is actually, is a great time to move to that side.
Um so they do have access.
They do have access to the library and also within Amplify, they have access to even more digital books.
Okay.
So they're all online. Um they're all, you know, a lot of current books, a lot of classic. Um, yeah.
Just want to make sure that if we're implementing this curriculum, that they do have enough access.
Yeah, and the classrooms have libraries too. There's plenty of books.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Uh so just for the novel reading, I don't want to take up too much more time, but sorry, I get excited. Um we do have the um three novels that we read at each grade level, but then just with the reading expectations, my father, her family's at home. Um the kids should be reading for a minimum of twenty minutes, really three nights a week. Ideally, it should be every night, but the requirement is that the kids are reading for an hour a week. On Friday, they have a prompt that they have to critical thinking, they're writing about the book that they read. Um, and that's, you know, something that every English class is doing in the building. Um, and information went home at the beginning of the year, but it's a great dialogue for parents and guardians to have with their kids, what book are they reading? Ask things about their book that they're reading, maybe even read a book with them. So you're having that dialogue at home um as well. So.
I just have some clarifications.
Sure.
So they're supposed, they're doing a prompt on the book they're reading independently?
They're very generic, right?
Um, what advice might you give to that character based on what you've read this week? So.
Report what book they're reading?
Yes. Each teacher knows.
Some other uh strategic improvements that we've, uh, you know, some we've talked about, some uh, but there's been advances or improvements within them. Um, our data teams are still uh meeting regularly, looking at our benchmark assessments and gas scores. Um, we are now working on practice of sending reports to families, again, including them in the conversation um with with their students about how they're figuring on these. A really uh helpful tool uh that we've added to help this along is uh Open Architects. Um, you're going to see a bunch of graphs coming up. That's from Open Architects. This is a much more user-friendly data warehouse, uh, super informative for us. We still have the common scoring days. Really important piece here, just want to notice the calibration, okay? Um, if if my understanding of a good essay is very different from Kate's understanding of a good essay, and then we go into our own separate rooms and be graded, um, that's difficult to move a whole building that way. Okay, so the goal here is investing the time to get the teachers' time together to calibrate. It's not necessarily just them sitting in their own rooms grading. They are calibrating and discussing, and they have the rubrics and asking each other for advice. And that helps give us give better feedback to the kids. Um, so it's really important practice on there. And uh just some school-wide goals that we've been working on, uh, increased writing opportunities across the curriculum. Um, our our program leaders have done their job kicking that off in the vertical teams expressing that. Um, this is actually some teams' goals, but their actual evaluation goals, um, professional practice. But um, you know, we discussed it as a whole staff yesterday. Um, so because to your point, okay, that 10-minute write daily is great for that ELA class, but that's not really going to get us where we need to be 10 minutes a day per student. It needs to be happening much more frequently across the day. It really can't just fall to the ELA department, so we're working on that. Um, and we are uh working on continuously trying to make our instructional focus uh come to life and and bring life into it. So we have some uh monthly themes and we're bringing it into sort of other aspects of the work that we're doing this year. Tract there. All right, coming back to, since so now we're digging into some of these indicators from the vocal survey. These are around instruction and engagement. We've, we just went through a lot of inputs, right? We, a lot of things that people are doing. So oh, what are we seeing, at least from a student view on the end, on the back end? Uh, the these uh boxes highlighted in green indicate areas where our students are reporting uh uh increased favorable uh rating as compared to the state. So um, at least two of my academic class of students plan and work on projects to solve real-world problems. Um, open-ended questions. Uh, students wrestle with problems that they don't have an obvious answer. My work is challenging, but not difficult. You know, th- these are areas that don't just happen, right? This is that, all that hard work that we were talking about, that Kate was discussing, all the work that's happening, vertical teams and all of the meetings and all the work teachers putting in. You know, our kids are saying, yeah, we, that's to me them saying, we're getting a pretty good education here, right? We're getting asked hard things. Um, you know, a few areas, um, slightly below the state, but you know, uh, they can do well in their language, but we're still talking about 80% of us responding favorably to that, so. Can't really, you know, it would be great to see that as a hundred, but those are some really positive numbers. Um, and I think that is some of the output um that we've seen from the work that's been going on.
Can we?
No, no, just, yeah, those are, these are the things we want students. This is what helps them really learn deeply, you know. Their problems, uh, open, open to questions, you know, strongly think the things that don't have an obvious answer.
I just, I want to note, this is from last frame, right? So while this is happening and these things are improving so dramatically, we were also talking a lot about um some behavior issues. Um, and I just want to sort of, this is really um important, I think, to note that these improvements in this structure is happening in the building, even though that's harder to sort of, you know, it's sort of harder to get your head around this kind of stuff than it is like, oh, we have something in the community. But just to give O'Malley a quick, you know, shout out, right? That this new positive stuff is also happening.
Right, so uh some big issues in our special education programming. Um, one of them being the addition of a special education administrator, Leanne Bradley, been a great addition to our team. Um, I'm going to kind of hand this off to her to sort of take us uh through where we, where we are and where we're going.
Hello, yes, um, I'm Leanne. I joined O'Malley over the summer. Um, we got to know the admin team um throughout the summer and then between September, sort of hit the ground running with um the staff and the students. Um, you know, not just in the special ed world, but with the general population as well. Um, so just want to kind of go over some of our focuses and what's going on in some of our programs. Um, you know, we want all the students at O'Malley to thrive. Um, the programs that we're providing are inclusive, um, but they're also in place to allow every student to get what they need. Um, we want every student to be in the least restrictive environment that is best for them. Um, and we're able to do that through um our programming.
Does that mean switch slides?
You can switch slides, yeah. Um, so I want to create a collaborative, also through our inclusion programs. Our inclusion program is really the backbone of our um special ed programming. Um, our grade level liaisons and ESPs are in constant communication with our programs, our gen ed teachers, our service providers, um counselors, reading specialists, speech and language. Um, and then in addition to our um expansive inclusion program, we have a lot of um other programs in our, in our school as well that I could go over. Ben, you can switch over to slide. Um, so yes, in addition of the, of myself, um, I've gotten to know the staff, the special ed staff, the general education staff in the building. Um, I've gotten to get into the classrooms, see some of the programs up and running. I've gotten to know a lot of students and their families. And um, you know, one of the main goals is just for the, our students see, have success in middle school. Um, we want our kids to enjoy coming to school and we want families to kind of feel that um at home as well. Some of our programs include our special pr- uh social pragmatics program. Um, so this allows students to have flexible inclusion. So um they can sort of always have their least restrictive environment. Some days that might mean it's full inclusion. They're going to their gen ed classes, um, ideally all day. Um, sometimes they need um some support with transition, or they might need a space to um regulate or take a break, and that's provided by our social pragmatics program. These students have social skills that they, small group social skills that they um attend every other day. Um, they work on skills for teens curriculum. They receive explicit instruction to help them navigate real-world um social situations. They utilize games and activities um to reinforce conversational skills. And then the goal is that, you know, they practice that in a small group setting and then they can do it um in the classroom, at lunch and recess, at home with families, um, and in the long term out in the real world. We also have our language-based program. Um, that's not a new program to the building, but we have shifted um how we're running that program. So now we have two special education teachers. Um, they're both have years of experience in language-based instruction and specialized reading instruction. They work alongside the gen ed teachers in social studies and science, and then they teach ELA in a small group setting. Um, they work closely with the speech language pathologist and the reading specialist, and they deliver language-based instruction. They focus on pulling out language and breaking down vocabulary. We also have a learning center program. Um, that is not a program new to the building, but we are working to build out some curriculum for them. These are students that have um all four core subjects, but it's really modified. Um, they work closely with the speech language pathologist, the school psych. Um, they do small group work, um, social skills, they do small group work on language, and then they do, you know, really modified instruction for social studies, science, and math. Um, they do some, they're building in some activities of daily living. They're doing some light cooking in their classroom. Um, we're looking into um writing a grant to get some um like food and materials so that they can continue to do some light cooking activities in, right in their classroom. We also have a life skills program. Um, this is new to O'Malley for the first time in a few years. We have three students in this program. Um, and we have a new teacher who is wonderful with these students. Um, we have an RBT attached to this program who is also wonderful with these students. Um, these kids bring joy to um a lot of the school, a lot of the staff. Sometimes I'll have staff saying, oh, can't find me. I'm in with the life skills kids. Um, their classroom is very inclusive and welcoming. They're working on um activities of daily living. They're also doing cooking in their classroom. They go to um special area classes so that they have some time with their peers. They go to um visit and art for this term. Um, and they've really been welcomed into our building. I think um it was, you know, a new program for the first time in a few years and kind of a little wary of how it would look. And um it looks, they fit in really well. We really appreciate having them there. We also have our therapeutic program. Um, this program was created and kind of um morphed to um allow some more individualized support, again, with that flexible inclusion. Um, this is for kids with, you know, emotional disabilities that have a hard time accessing the curriculum in a regular gen ed setting. So we're providing this um sort of sub-separate setting for them as needed. We have some kids who are fully included. Um, sorry, fully sub-separate in the therapeutic program. They're doing most of their academics right in the, um, in the program. We have two teachers in there who are, um, you know, giving them instruction on academics. Maybe they're um discussing with uh grade level teachers on what, you know, the curriculum is. Maybe they're modifying a little bit, but maybe they just need that space work um not in the gen ed setting. We have a couple of kids who flex in, so maybe they go to science and math. Maybe they go for 20 minutes to all their classes and then take their work back to that classroom. Um, and then we have kids who sort of use it as a touch point. Um, some of the work besides academics they're doing in there is collaborative problem solving. They're working with school counselors. They're working with their teachers. I know each week the teachers kind of set the kids up with goal writing, like what, what are you looking to um accomplish just this week? And then I know at the end of the week, they always do a checkout, like how did that go? What did that look like? Um, as well as daily check-ins and check-outs. Um, that program is running really well. Our staff are, we have a new staff member in there who is really just kind of jumped in and um they're working to communicate with the gen ed classrooms and um kind of create a more cohesive and collaborative program. You can go to the slide.
I just have a question.
Oh, sure.
About the um, the life skills program you said is inclusive, um.
So all their academics are fully sub-separate. They go to, um, they are included.
So it's not the, the life skills classroom itself that's, it's them going to other classrooms?
Yes, I think so, yeah. So, yeah, they go, they're included with the gen ed population for like um PE and art.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
You know, just want to really just marker here, go, um, uh, life skills is new, the therapy program is new. Um, it doesn't mean we're, we're trying to provide, especially in the therapy program or, or on um this sort of pragmatics. Uh, we're trying to provide the services before and the support, but at a different level, with different intentionality and also some new staff as well. Um, it's, it's, it's a significant difference. Um, especially on therapy, in terms of the, but like you said, you described a few of the key pieces that students who need that level of support under emotional regulation, skill building, really need, that regularity, that goal setting, you know, where they're taking ownership. Um, those are some real differences from last year. Um, they're very important ones, and I really attribute to our existing staff, some new staff, you know, new, um, Leanne's been, you know, really supportive. Mike and Mike and Leanne and the team worked together well, but um, it really is um uh different lots of things, and they're off to a good start, you know? Folks are also working super hard and trying to get it better and better, you know? Um, but it's off to a good start and, and, and I just want to sort of set that as a real difference from last year.
Hey, just to comment, Leanne, uh, this, someone who is one of them who was in special ed, I grew, especially in middle school, it seemed like my, I had one child that, that received special ed services and my other kids, I was like, yeah, they seem to be going in the right direction. They're on right. But it was really important that the school communicate with me as a parent or us as a parent, my wife and I. Um, are we doing that? Are we kind of, I mean, there's a lot of new stuff going on. Are we doing a good job? You think of kind of keeping the parents informed of that kind of stuff, and that's probably to either you or Mike.
Yeah, I can speak to that. Um, I think, you know, we're really pushing and I think most of our special ed liaisons um really work to kind of get that communication right off the bat in the beginning of the school year, introduce themselves, you know, they're students on my caseload. Um, and kind of we have a lot of, especially in the therapeutic program and the social pragmatics program. I know the staff have like weekly communications with parents to update them. Um, some it's kind of like, not in the IEP, but kind of like, you know, we're going to do this. And some it's more of like, hey, just want to check in and let you know how the week went. Um, you know, that um many of the teachers are doing that. Um, we've had a lot of progress meetings so far that I've been spending or know about, um, kind of just check in. We've had a lot of um positive progress meetings, a lot of fifth and sixth grade transition. We've had um parents who are, you know, a little apprehensive about the shift to the middle school, small, coming from a small school into a big school, seeing how those services are going to carry over. Um, and we've had a lot of um just positive, not just feedback from the parents, but interaction, like the staff who were at the meeting really knew the students and really um were helping the students be successful in their transition to middle school. Um, so yeah, that, that definitely has been ongoing and um mostly positive.
Great.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, so it's all markup programs.
Yeah.
It's portal communication, but also the extension of the programs as it, as it um connects to the popular, the the other programs, general ed program at large. So we have um communication documents, asynchronous, synchronous documents that we do to collaborate out to get feedback from teachers to make sure that we're uh, we're working together to make sure this is a high-leverage um situation. With support. And that's really the key part of these programs. These weren't just designed overnight. These were designed by the, the data points coming in, multitude of, of data collection points to um to match that up against really what our population is telling us and how we need to build a program with that high-leverage intent to uh put the staff members in a position of success, which would make our students a position of success. Sharing that communication out is, is a huge part of programs.
Yeah, good, yeah. Thank you.
Um, we're really working on um collaborating on each of their programs, supported by specialized professionals. Um, our special education teachers are trained in targeted methodologies like problem-solving, using social thinking, specialized reading instruction. Um, we're having clinical staff meetings for the programs um bi-weekly. So those include the teachers of the program, myself, um, Mike Jarvis, as he attends, um, usually monthly. Um, school adjustment counselor, speech pathologist. Um, we do have an OT for the district who comes to our building for some, some consult and some direct service. Um, we're really working on collaborating with the gen ed. Um, you know, all our students are, are all our students. So um, you know, it's hard to have one person doing one thing and not collaborating with somebody else. So we really are working on um more consulting, like we're consulting with the programs. The programs are consulting with the gen ed houses um to try to just keep that communication going and make sure that um all the students are getting what they need and on the same page with that. Um, next steps, we want to continue to support our program development. Um, collaboration time, I think we've really, you know, worked to get some good consult and collaboration time within the staff. And then, you know, building some professional development for the staff. And then, you know, keep building some professional development for the staff. Um, we want to continue to evaluate the needs of the inclusion program. And, you know, just continue to align our services throughout the whole district. We've been doing work with our program leader meetings that are run by Mike to kind of just make sure that everybody's on the same page and make those transitions from fifth to sixth and eighth to ninth, go as smooth as possible.
And, and just around these next steps, I think one thing, you know, this was a big year for us, special education wise. Okay, um, I've, I've felt the difference in the building and I've seen the difference in the kids. Okay. Um, and just so as we're moving forward, you, you know, um, we're going to be doing a lot of what you've been hearing me talk about in the core instruction with these curriculum adoptions. Now getting good at this. We have this new thing, right? But now it's about fundamentals and getting good at this. So, um, as we go through, it's, it's probably not going to seem, you know, I would imagine next few years, it's not going to seem so big and, but we don't want to take our eye off the, off the ball, right? This is, we've got a lot of really, really good things in place right now. Um, and it's our job to be willing into those and refine them, um, as we have. But I think this was a big shift here, so.
No, no data here in terms of perception or, you know, sort of feedback. But, um, as I was saying, that we'll be doing, you know, through our, uh, meetings with families. Um, uh, turning together, or Mike being on, uh, and letting, um, sort of feedback surveys and responses from fam, from student, uh, sorry, families in terms of their experience, those verification and also in, in sort of team process and, and meeting and sort of stuff. So we will, you know, in future times be able to show, uh, how parents are, you know, what their senses of, uh, their experience with their child and themselves as well.
So overall school culture and structures, um, we've looked at it from here, environmental safety, right? Um, one thing I want to point out as we're looking at some of these numbers. If it has an asterisk next to it, this is an important thing. It's, uh, like a golf score, the lower the better. Okay. It's one of those questions that they ask. It's like, you want the opposite. Okay. So, um, you know, so you see something, uh, students have spread rumors and lies about me more than once on social media, 28% like, low is good. The lower that is, the better we want to be active. Yeah. You know, one, one of the, I think our highlights here, um, is you see down at the bottom, feeling comfortable to reach out to a teacher, a counselor, promotional support if needed. Also, um, e- even though it's a little bit below state, that first one that's highlighted, if I tell a teacher other adults, someone is being bullied, the teacher adult will do something to help. Um, you know, the, these are, these are areas where it's, it's so important that a, a kid in our building has at least one trusted adult to go to, right? And they know where to turn for help. Uh, you'll see some of these numbers, we still have more work to do on that. Okay. Uh, you know, a lot of this isn't wildly out of line with the rest of the state, but it's, it's still, it's, it's consistent, uh, work, relationship building, uh, and communicating to students, uh, that, you know, we're all here for them, right? Every I think, yeah, everybody in this room from here over, any one of these adults are here for any kid in that building, right? So, um, that, and, and, you know, we're going to keep working through that.
I'd just say, you know, for my point of view, that first of all, my teachers, respect among students, you know? That is, that's a fundamental piece. And O'Malley is scoring, you know, as high as the state, a little bit higher than that. And that's a, that's a, you know, I just wonder, like, that's a big thing. Okay? Um, you know, and, um, and Mike, this email are going to show, show you some areas that they're working to improve this as well at the same time. But there's some fundamental pieces here, especially the, you mentioned, Mike, the second, the second one there about teachers, you know, hel- hel- helping out, um, and then also, um, reaching out to students, uh, reaching, reaching out to staff if you're a, if it says it's trusted adult. Those are some of the protective factors that are crucial. They don't see them or if they're lower than averages, then there's real, real challenge. Um, but those things are, those protective factors here are strong in O'Malley. That means that rest of the stuff has, has a, has a chance to improve as well. So Mike can see where it goes.
Um, now about routines in school, um, you're actually going to hear me talk about this a few times, uh, not just in school, but routines that there's a need for middle school age students. Um, so we've done, some of these feel like small tweaks. Okay, short in homeroom, um, but you're talking about something that's impacting, uh, 600 students, right? So it's a small tweak, but 15 minute homeroom. Yeah, get 16, 600 kids, like you start to run the odds about how we're using our time, right? And so these, these, you know, sweating the small things really matter sometimes about how we're using our time. Um, we got, uh, oh, this lovely admin team, we, we all have our standing desks. We are out in the hallways as much as possible. I like to perch out in the commons quite a bit, especially during specialist transition time, because that's the busy spot. Uh, but just, you know, trying to, again, notice where we have these areas that we can just, uh, be in control and, and, uh, one of the things I've you know, expressed to staff about what, what we're trying to do with all of us, right? Not just the admin, but teams being visible is kind of the equivalent of, you know, if you see a cruiser on 128, okay? Even if you weren't speeding, we all pump the brake, right? You know, kind of just, it's just that mental check. So the more visible we can be collectively, um, you know, there's just things that help settle, uh, those transitions. Cause, um, I don't know if you all noticed, the middle school kids have a lot of energy, right? So, um, so we manage that, right?
Except in the morning.
Except in the morning, yes. Um, to mention those transitions to and from specialists, um, but really, really just being explicit about all this stuff as a staff, right? This work we did at the opening of the year, we started it last year, just really being explicit. So we're all on the same page. Um, advisory, still meeting once every six day cycle, community meetings where we're celebrating kids, calling them out. Those have been, um, a huge hit. That's actually what you see right there in that image. Um, and then, you know, uh, other pieces that we need to explore too is the accountability piece for some of our students, right? That's kind of the other thing. Um, we're exploring some Saturday school. We've got some tweaks to our, uh, routines around issuing attentions, things like that. That, that accountability piece is important, but also, you know, we discussed alleying last year cannot be the only piece of how we're promoting the culture, but it is an important piece of letting students know they need to be accountable for, uh, their behaviors in school. Monthly themes, I mentioned this, uh, we have our core values and we have our instructional focus. Instructional focus kind of gets broken down into, into a few bullets. Uh, but we're doing school wide work on this. What you see on the bottom right is in our faculty meeting, our upcoming theme for November, um, this core value is going to be integrity. Uh, and the component of our instructional focus is thinking creatively and critically. So we wanted to give space, um, when I'm in that, when I'm standing up the front in that library, there is a ton of expertise in that room. And so a big shift that I'm trying to do is they all need time to just generate and share the ideas that already exist. There's a, a lot of those answers that we have are already there. It's just how do we harness it, right? So, um, they had some time to work together. We've got the post-its, I got, and I got posted up and, you know, now Pete and I can combine these and share it out with everybody and say, you know, if you weren't sure, what does, what does this look like in an ELA classroom? Well, three of your colleagues have an idea about that and go ahead and steal it. One thing I was told very early in my teaching career is the best teachers are great thieves, right? Uh, so you, we, you know, that's been all the way of thinking, but you, you should be collaborating and borrowing from each other. So, um, mentioning it in, uh, family updates, mentioning it over the intercoms in the morning, really trying to breathe some life into these pieces here. Um, that, that's some more positive things that we're trying to do, right? Uh, for the kids, um, and student month is actually, what we're trying to do is be heavily weighted on what those two, these two components were that month. So student of the month for November really should it be among other things, demonstrating high levels of integrity and creative and critical thinking in their classes. That's kind of what we're looking for. So we get a shout out for that. Um, one of the things of all this data, especially the, the student vocal data, um, and it's, and it's, it's so critical. The, none of this improves, right? Without the teachers in the classroom being awesome. Okay. So that like, cause that's where the whole, that's where it all happens, right? Um, it's, you know, we talk about these structures and those are important and we can talk about these things, but it's the, it's the face time with their teachers, Tom. And you can see that in our numbers, right? Kids are feeling like my teachers. No, I can do good work. My teachers are challenging me and they're reporting out on that. Um, so we're trying to do some things though to make sure that those staff, uh, the staff's cups are being filled, the buckets are being filled as much as we can. Um, we are bringing back some old traditions, uh, can't say enough. I know I wasn't here during, uh, pre COVID, but I do just know from my, my texts in schools, COVID like wiped out brutally traditions that had been built over time about like and stuff that we did. And it's amazing how hard it is to get them back. Something that you may have done for five, six, seven years. It's almost taken that long to get them back, right? And, um, but so we're, we're bringing back staff potlucks on our release days. Um, we've got morale pals. This is sort of, uh, you fill out a little survey if you're interested in to get collected and then anonymously distributed and, you know, it's what's your favorite candy? What do you, so just all small little things, but you can show up in your mailbox, nice little thing, uh, to show up. Uh, you saw the collaboration in the faculty meeting, just like time with each other is a good thing, I think. Um, you know, and we want to facilitate that. Uh, in our internal, uh, updates, right? We have a the, the parent one that goes up, we also have an internal staff one. Um, we, we, we try to do weekly shout outs on the O'Malley All Stars. Um, and teachers can recommend each, they, they see, again, they see things and they, we can, they can say, you know, fill out and, and shout that person out there. Um, and then last year, Friday, we, we try to, a lot of us have some O'Malley gear or various things. We try to, um, kind of show up and show some unity there. Uh, we had a meeting over the summer, it was great. You know, same shirt, same team, right? It's a nice reminder that we're all here for the kids. Um, I can see some pictures there. Uh, Michelle, you're, uh, prominent here, Matt, department has some great T-shirts, actually.
Michelle, could you, that's a great photo. Can you explain what's going on there?
Actually, that's our data meeting. So, um, so the, the shirt says math crew, we're always right. And so on data meeting day, um, we all wore our math shirts. As we're a department, but more importantly, we're all on the same team. And it reminds us that, you know, we are a team. We're not I mean, we're a little competitive. Um, because we'll, we'll say like, we understand the numbers and we know that you can measure things. And so we're a little competitive. So we try and remind ourselves that we're all on the same team. Um, yeah, so that's our eighth grade team. Um,
Okay, is, is just the committee, the name, the two other teachers?
It's what?
The, the names of two of the teachers there, the committee, so the committee knows.
The names of the teachers. So, um, I am in the middle, or I'm inside in the middle. Is Evan Kitter, um, and next to him is Alex Anderson. Both Evan and Alex are graduates of the O'Malley Middle School and the Gloucester High School. Um, so there are some of the new teachers added to our school. Um, I've mentioned this, I think, to Amy, that, um, much like Harvard, we're a har, like hospitals at Harvard were a teaching teaching school because most of our teacher, many, many of our teachers in our building right now are learning to be teachers because they don't have previous experience or education in that. So that's the case with both Evan and, um, Alex, um, working on getting their licenses and professional status and professional licenses.
Thank you, Michelle. Very helpful. Really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
And Michelle, just because you were part of the planning over the summer, um, and this is not obvious what it is at all. The, uh, the artwork, the artwork, if you will, up top on the top right, that activity that we did on opening day, you might just explain that pretty slowly.
Yeah. So there's a new instructional that we call hexagonal thinking. Um, based on hexagons and that, you know, you could have, like, if you're doing a book study, you could have the word, uh, conflict. And then people could write when conflicts happened. And then you could go around the room and discuss, you know, well, I saw a conflict when this character and that character did this, and I saw a conflict when this character and this guy, and you could put them together and you can paste them together. So um, for the last couple of years, I've been doing this with students as a, like get to know you thing. So we did this with staff. And so the first thing was, was to find someone you had something in common with. So I would walk up and say, did you go to the beach? And they would say, yes. And I'd be like, well, I didn't. So that's not ours. So let's move on. And so once you found one connection, you have a set that's a pair. Then our pair goes and finds another pair and they make a connection with someone in that group and then they're get taped together. And eventually by the end, everybody's are put together showing that somehow we're all connected. It's like the six degrees of Kev thinking, right? People on these hexa, hexagons are only a few degrees away from other people in our community.
And, and so we have that hung up in the library, which is where we have our staff meetings. Nice touch point or reminder when we come back and, you know, maybe we've been in our houses for a, a, a long time. And remember, we are one big community in the school. So thank you, Michelle.
Did you say that you do teacher recognition once?
In our internal staff update, yeah.
I would just think it would be awesome. Actually, we got a report on that at school community level. We don't hear enough about our teachers getting recognized. Like in your superintendent's report, you know, we hear like kids. I think, and if they do it at high school or elementary, you don't know if they're doing it at other schools, but.
There are many different places, I'm sure, but yeah, but yeah, yeah, great, very helpful.
I think it would be good to hear about our staff.
Melissa, do you know about the gratitude thing that Ben does?
Yes.
Yes. It's very similar to that because the I would say most of the time the teacher shout out is one, one teacher saying this is what another teacher is doing in their classroom, or this is what another teacher has done. It's above and beyond. So there is similar.
Okay.
Experience, yeah.
And we're not submitting them twice. We're not, you know, so they're only in ours. They're not being submitted also over to Ben. So he's missing out on a lot of this stuff.
You do though. We'll catch that.
Thank you for that.
Okay, um, no, it's, I, I, the, the sigh isn't about the actual data. It's just that there's a lot, a lot of, a lot of data. Okay, um.
There you go.
All right. So, like, so in time sake, okay, what we did do is we front loaded the overall takeaways. Okay. Because it's going to, there's actually too much, no matter how slowly we went through it to like really process it all. So there's visuals, right? We can, we can see, but big takeaways, um, we're really starting to see some positive growth, particularly in seventh grade. Okay. That's from, um, assessments this fall that we've taken.
Can I jump in? It's also English and PAS for grade seven was high for growth, but then it was also the, the current seventh grade in their fall star data. So that really is like seventh and eighth grade. It's my turn.
Um, we're really working on creating, um, and building upon a culture of, and practice of analyzing data and MCAS released questions. Sometimes the state doesn't help us out with that. Uh, those, I think it was previous year, they, they didn't release any questions. So that doesn't help us. Um, so that, the point of that test is to help us. Not releasing the items doesn't help us. Uh, but when they do, right? We, we work with that. Um, and, and, you know, again, that's that calibration piece that I was talking about earlier. Um, and you will note, uh, that compared to last year, we doubled our annual accountability target percentage. Okay? Build that, that a little bit more, but, um, that, that, that's a big, that's a big step forward. All right. So this is the general accountability data. Um, you'll see on the, in the middle of the screen is for all students. On the right hand side of the screen is for lowest performing students. Um, that is a piece that the state looks at. They look at your 20, the bottom 20% of performing students. Um, and they specifically award accountability points and targets for that subgroup. It becomes its own subgroup. It's a fluid one. There's just, it, it, there, there's still more to do, but there are a lot of sprites spots on this compared to the presentation we, we gave last year. Um, we have, we did this year, we are, um, getting awarded achievement points in math in ELA. Um, we did not last year. Okay. Uh, we're seeing uh, better, uh, performance with our English language proficiency, that those are our, um, that's the access score that our multilingual students take. Um, you'll notice uh, that for our lowest performing students, okay, we have, um, achievement points awarded there. Um, you know, these, these are going to be students that are also sort of your highest need students, right? There's a, there's real contributing factors, um, and complicating factors about who they are that's going to make that, you know, a, a challenge for us to be performing better for them. It's, it's really, um, it's really positive. You know, um, we noted at the end of last year, chronic absenteeism, um, that we, we struggled from that. We, we never really recovered, uh, from the fall, uh, but we're, and there was some real illnesses in the, in January, but, um, we, we're, you know, our Tennessee is working on that immediately. We're taking some really strong corrective measures. Make sure we were addressing that. So let's keep going because we can dive into other things a little bit more. So this is the key, uh, that, that point that I made, the annual criterion reference target percentage last year, 18%. Um, nobody's happy with that, obviously. Uh, but you see for last year, 36, uh, or this 2024, it's 18. This year, 36%. Um, we, they, they have an average of your two years, right? So if you, if you have a bad year, you kind of, that's, that stays with you, right? For, for a year. Um, our goal, obviously, we increased to 36% this year, increase more, um, you know, with this round of MCAS, we dropped that 18% and then we really started to see um, those numbers improving dramatically.
Like, just for us, the, I'm a I'm a wide thinker, not a deep thinker, unfortunately, but. Can you just unbox this a little, like, exactly? I'm not quite sure what I'm looking at, this thing I'm saying.
So.
Can we go back to this?
And I I think I may know something, but I think I may be struggling with the same thing you are, like, or partly. Like, what is accountability, like, what does accountability mean for this?
Yeah, so it's, so I I will just say, the state doesn't make it easy. They set, they set targets for all schools, okay, and we need to achieve those targets. Okay, and based on, so in this instance, for achievement, okay, as we're trying to achieve those targets. They're they're, based on the student performance, we're getting a certain number of accountability points awarded.
So you're aiming for, so you're aiming, so so what you see here is, that's the points earned, okay, there's points earned versus total possible points.
Yeah.
And so depending on your scores, you know, in in different areas here, you're earning a certain number of points, okay? What they're saying here is that for all students, we earn thirty four percent of the possible points. You obviously want to earn, you know, sixty, seventy, eighty, eighty percent, you know, possible points or more, right? And then, so that's that's a piece of it, and you and you and you combine both the percentage of possible points for all students. The percentage of possible points for low performing students, thirty four, thirty eight, the average is thirty six, okay? So that's for that's for twenty twenty five. The same for the same process here in twenty twenty four yielded eighteen percent. Okay, so we're we're using, so they use a two year accountability score, for the speaker, their their target. And they combined eighteen and thirty six for the last two years, but it's not fifty fifty, it's not a straight average, it's a weighted average, so they're taking. For twenty twenty four, forty, that counts forty percent, whereas twenty twenty five, it counts sixty percent, that produces twenty nine, that's sort of like our our base of where we're moving toward. I mean, that's the combined number, basically, of where we start, and then then from there, they're going to set a target for the next year, okay?
You see there, it says moderate progress toward targets, okay, so what they're saying is, obviously, as a, you know. As an accountability percentage rate, we want to be higher, however. The O'Malley Middle School is making, by their standards, making moderate progress towards the targets they set, versus either retreating away from them. Or or making limited progress, which is also a way to qualify.
Or significant progress.
Yeah, or significant progress.
The points are awarded based on how how close you went to those targets, so if you get to get all four points, you need to exceed your target. You get three points if you meet your target. Two points if you've improved, but not as far as your target. One if there's no change, and zero if it's declined, so. We mentioned absenteeism went down, so that's why we got a zero, but when you see all those twos, that means that's showing that we've improved. We just didn't improve as much as they wanted us to for our target. So all those twos are good, we'd like them to be threes and fours, but but those are insignificant, the year before, we didn't. So it's the last year's eighteen that's bringing us down, but if we if we had higher next year, then it's thirty six plus whatever we have. Thirty six would be the forty percent.
And 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 it's looking for threes and fours. I'm so thankful I asked the question.
Look at it two differently now, right? And every school has different targets, right?
Every, so every school has targets assigned based on how their their groups formed.
And where the pieces are at, as well.
Right, some visuals, if you want to go through these, sort of. I I don't, I don't want to gloss over them, but it's 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 a lot, and so this is open architects, these are the types of visuals that our teachers can now get, which is actually super helpful. This is some longitudinal information around ELA MCAS. The graph, I think, down on the bottom left. Is instructive, that might be the easiest visual to see, the gray line is how the state performed year over year. And the line that we're, the line below that is. You know, just just noting that year of implementation right there, but then you do, you again, that it's that. Coming back up, right, that that we're happy to see and we want to continue to see move. This is, by the way, this is where students meeting are exceeding expectations, okay? So the next graph is going to look similar, but this is for our ADP, again, that's student growth percentile meeting. How did, if a student scores at a certain level in sixth grade? And then you, then they take the test again in seventh grade. To which percentile of achievement did they reach, like, how many more, what percent more did they do better than than a similar cohort, okay? Again, you'll see, we're we're seeing, coming up there, getting really close to the state average in our SGP there. Notice a bar graph on the right, really important, seventh grade actually exceeding the state's average for SGP. That's where we're seeing some of that highlights in seventh grade, really important. Where SGP is really important, the higher that is, that means the closer you're getting to seeing the achievement that you want to, right? Because i- i- unless your your achievement's already maxed out, you're not going to have high SGP, right, there's. Because you can't, you're already growing, right, so, but outside of that, what we really need to be paying attention to is that growth, it's a super important number for us.
This may not be an answerable question, so I know that. Are there different, when the cohorts come into O'Malley? Are cohorts different levels? Like, so, is one seventh, is one sixth grade, fifth grade coming in at a different level than another fifth, you know, another year?
Oh, it's year to year.
Year to year, like, you know, and I mean, all the elementaries.
So so yes, that actually is very insightful, which is why we look at both, the, what they call CPI, right, or our scale score. And or which that leads to the meeting or exceeding expectations, and SGP, okay? So if you happen to have a cohort, let's just use cohort, that's a real thing, so there was, if you had a particular cohort of kids. And that year was really critical, okay? Well, we we may not expect to see their achievement as high as compared to other things, but we do want to see is their SGP high. Because that means we're getting them up to where they need to be, right, so so there are two really important indicators to look at, and we kind of. You know, you can unpack them to a high level, but the other the other piece to that, too, with the SGP thing is, that's not comparing. Our seventh grade, you know, this year's seventh grade with last year's seventh grade, it's comparing. Statewide, the other sixth graders that took that test that scored similar to them a year before, right, so it's kind of norming it for them, so.
That's where you know, in terms of just like goals, being exceeding a percent as a goal, you know, one term goal, and then also sixty, basically for growth.
Right, no, I understand, I'm thinking more about sort of like all the good sort of longitudinal stuff that's happening now between fifth and sixth grade, you know, just. Because. I think there, you know, there have been differences, right, so connecting. Fifth and sixth, and you know, just feels like a way to help keep moving starting starting earlier.
So SGP is like the easiest sort of thing to think about, is quick longitudinal from the previous years of Spain.
Yeah, so these are just our preliminary all star scores, so the, just to clarify, the six, seven, eight you saw for the MCAS. Is really the current seven, eight, nine, because they've moved on, so this six, seven, eight is the current six, seven, eight. And so, one thing in looking at the star, our star scores do tend to be about ten percent higher. I just want to know, there is no writing piece in the star three sixty for either math or reading, so. That might be one of the factors that just accounts for the difference, but, you know, writing, as you know, is one of our school tools. It is an area where our kids do. They could be getting on the MCAS, but we're, you know, out the gate, doing well, we have analyzed the star three sixty. Standards, look at the standards and the different domains that the kids in front of us. Now, maybe have mastered ELA, it's a little different, there's a lot of green kids come to us with, because the standards. Are repeated from year to year, they're set at a different level, whereas math is a totally new curriculum, different standards each year. But yeah, so we look at the data, they're doing, you know, the seventh grade.
And you'll see as the year goes along, the rest of the star, it's it's, you know, the second.
Yeah, and we usually update you throughout to kind of look at.
SGP, again, just, this is different, this is normed across the companies, the kids who take the company, the test for the company, right, so it's different across the whole state. In corporate schools in state, but it's it's no longer against whoever star has.
Nationwide, and it also, I believe. Accounts for the last three data points that they've been taken within the star. So it's the kids' worlds compared to the, you know, they're looking at the spring, I believe, and fall.
Fall, spring, winter, so it's part of his last winter. How does it work if a student comes to the district?
They'll take it immediately when they come in, they put it down.
They don't have to.
And how they're taking.
And do they, they're not counted in the growth?
Do you want this data compared to surrounding communities?
Star now.
I mean, this essentially is, SGP is essentially a comparison, because you know, because you're looking at the growth in in comparison to all the folks who take star across the nation. But you're seeing compared, it's not just local, though.
Right, I'm just curious, we had it for local?
Yeah.
I mean, previous slide for proficiency, how is proficiency defined exactly, what, how is a student, what level does it become proficient?
And you're talking about S as as determined by star, right?
Well, yeah, or or maybe even for for school. I'm saying, like, when I see the scores from the from the previous slide. Percentage of proficiency by grade, that means that they're performing up to a certain level benchmark. At star sets.
I believe it's a district that we go by a state. It means the star. Configures it to be similar to where the state of Massachusetts expected. Offhand, I can't tell you that I'm looking at that.
Perhaps it measures like comparable to to MCAS.
Yeah, it should be, I mean, it is considered a predictor for MCAS. Just the pattern that I noticed is that it seems about ten percent. More kids in star are meeting proficiency than in the MCAS, from what I'm seeing. Again, there's writing in the.
So would this be like, so professional would be performing as as expected? Okay.
Yes.
It's a star considers at grade level, which is comparable to what MCAS would consider proficient as well. The the one thing that we're noticing is that the writing component is not in. The essay writing's not in star, so our scores look a little higher than our MCAS scores, because when you add in the writing for MCAS.
So I I would read that slide as.
Proficient thinking at grade level.
About half of our students are at grade level.
And the other half are below. Right, and we can dive in deeper to see if they've just missed, and and that's what that our schools are doing, to really identify those that are like. On the cusp, and that they just need a little extra push to get over that, and then we can see those that are really struggling. And they dive in deep enough to at the student level, so that they know exactly what the students need, we don't present that here. It's just the overview, but but we are doing the work, and in fact, O'Malley is identifying. These key students in grade level in classrooms, really, we want to get to go over that.
So can I push a little bit and tell me what happens once the child's identified? The student's identified, in other words, we have the data, what are we doing about it? Fifty percent, and say you identify ten percent that are really low performing, what happens once you have that data to that ten percent?
Kate or or Michelle talked about that?
Is there intervention or is what happens?
Return to data meeting. So the the new open architect has a way that you can click and say, please tell me everybody who was close to meeting proficiency. So when we analyze that, unfortunately, about half of the students were ones. Who had been proficient the year before and had moved down. And then, for ones who had moved up towards proficiency, and they've moved up. So math teachers know who those particular teachers are, or those particular students are. And so what they're targeting is making sure that those students are doing their work, making sure they're checking in for understanding during the lessons. More so with those students than, you know, the average student, very similar to if we had an IEP that says check in with students for understanding. Doing that, so they've added that part to it. Unfortunately, we don't have any tier two support, because that was cut a couple of years ago, so beyond the check ins within the classroom, we don't. Extra support. So. That's where we're at, you know.
I I will say, I mean, this, but. Knowing precisely who that is and not making educated guesses. Allows a teacher to use the time they have with the kid more effectively. Right, and you know, one of the things we did kind of discuss is. That, and you know, in the course of a sixty minute lesson, right, there's some explicit instruction, there's some, you know, and then and then as kids get working. You've got the the reality, right, that the the real pulse of a room is, there are kids that are like, hey, I've got a question, I've got a question, I've got a question. Then there's kids over here that are, because they want to be talking about whatever, and so now they're there, and. Kind of the theory here is, a lot of these kids are the kids that are good at school, but maybe aren't. Doing quite TFC, because their grades are pretty good, they complete their work, but this allows the teachers. To say, well, now I know I need to get there, right, and and that in and of itself, I mean, some of these kids that are right on the, we're talking about one or two points. That they missed meeting expectations by, right, so trying to just allow us to work a little bit with a little bit more information on a day to day basis.
No, I think it's, I think we've come so far with data in over the past years, but I'm here, and now we have the information, but we can't.
Well, I would say.
I mean, looking at this test, fifty percent proficiency, maybe it's sixty with a few on the. Line a little bit, but it feels like, okay, now we've identified the problem, but we don't have enough support to fix it.
Well, and, so, not instead, but and also, when you're, so on this here, on the right hand side, and this is one of the benefits of open architects, you can quickly see. You know, the level of proficiency, or percent, rather, in different, you know, areas of math. So on any, when you're talking thirty four percent or thirty eight percent, you know, that's not just, not just a tier two thing. That's also about, you know, from those areas like, and I'm sure that the math folks and that's what are looking at, okay, and analyzing it then. What are we doing geometry that we can do better, or what areas can we strengthen within geometry to make that, and that that isn't, that isn't for some kids, that's, if you're thirty percent, it's for all kids.
And so that was.
Yeah, it's both in there, so.
In star three sixty, like, when we go in and look at the data, what we spent time in our data meetings, specifically this time in ELA. I don't remember if we did it in math, because we're really looking at that group that was on the cusp there, but. We can group the kids based on their scores, so we can look at their different levels, and then when we're making small groups. And differentiating within the classroom, we can differentiate by having, you know, kids at the same level together, or we can pick from each level to make sure that the rooms are heterogeneous. And so we can use that data to, you know, give that instruction and adapt in the in the classroom by grouping.
But in the classroom, a lot of classrooms is one teacher, though, right? We have one teacher, four or five different groups, different differentiation, one period of learning, that's a lot of expectation.
So a lot has been discussed about implementation of math curriculum, but that isn't. Curriculum wasn't everything we wanted, so we also had a purchased cur. I don't want a curriculum called IXL, so one of the things that it does is it has an area that's adapted, like the star, and it quizzes you. And at the end, it says, you know, these are the five skills you need to work on in numbers, this is the three skills you need to work on in geometry. These are the four skills you need to work on in fractions or whatever. So each kid has completed that sort of adaptive summary. And so now they have that list of skills that they can be working on, so in. The eighth grade classes, I know, we have set it up that they have to work on one skill.
uh, work on one skill per every other week, and they need to complete that skill. IXL has a video they watch, and also if they get the answer wrong, it has an explanation of how to do it again. So that individually is working on the students, they do have to do some independent work. They've got some materials to support them, and there's an expectation that they'll do it. There isn't an individual instructor necessarily that's going to be able to answer their questions unless they bring those to class, or we have our after.
But is there someone checking to make sure they passed that, that topic? And if not, what are they doing? Are they doing it again or repeating something or?
Well, it, you have to get a SMART score, which means that you've completed a certain number of questions in a row correctly. So, and the closer you get to that SMART score, if you get one wrong, the more that gets taken away, and you really have to be getting them in a row, which
Yeah.
which generally tend to be your getting towards mastery because you can do them repetitively in a row. Um, but those things are more skill-based than critical thinking-based or dealing with vocabulary-based. So it's kind of a nice compliment because our curriculum is very critical thinking-based and very vocabulary-based. So that is like one intervention.
But I'm trying to find out if they don't pass that skill, they don't get the SMART goal.
Yep.
The SMART, what happens?
The teachers know. We, well, no.
Do they take more skill training in that area, or is it just, well, you didn't make that one the final?
It's repetitive, so you can't move on until you demonstrate proficiency or excellence.
It's catered to each kid individually.
Okay.
So each kid goes on, and these are the skills for that kid specifically, which is different than we have at RTR. And so when, if one child is able to, say, accomplish those, then they get new skills to work on. If, if this child is not being able to accomplish those skills, they'll give them more practice in those skills.
And it was like an AI thing, like.
Yeah, and it's great in that once the whole class is taken the assessment, it will break it up and say, this group of five needs to work on this skill, this group of six needs to work on this skill. So like tomorrow's a half day, and half days are kind of hard to teach. And so it's a good day to group up, so we'll have, like, some classes will be group up with the other kids that are in your same skill level and work on that skill together so that, you know, you can discuss with them. Because all of these skills are things you have been taught before. I mean, I have kids in my groups that need to learn how to tell time on a clock.
Yep.
Right, so like, these are skills that are things they've learned before. So it's sometimes just needing to, more practice to get to mastery. Like you can go to the driving range once, but that doesn't mean you've mastered how to drive.
Thank you, Michelle. Michelle, would this also inform kind of homework assignments for kids to be accessing these, this, these resources?
Some teachers, some teachers do the IXL as homework, some teachers do it in class. It depends what we do try to have our homework focused on the skill that we're currently learning, essentially. Or times that.
Because you don't want them not catching.
But we do have this longer term one that's like you have two weeks, so you have to have it done. So that is homework, but it's, it's not the nightly homework, it's sort of like a stretch homework. Maybe think of it as Saturday homework.
Well, because on, on, on this slide, you know, who you see here, and then, you know, there's a, there's a, a step up here from prior year. And then what, of course, we want to see is those continued steps, you know, and so it's just, it's one year, go in the right direction. But obviously, the team is working very hard on many, many levels to keep those steps going in the same direction.
Um, you go SGP, okay, um, you notice that the, that is a bigger recovery. Okay, which you should, you would, again, if you think about what, discussing what SGP is, it's a student's goal. With, with the dip that we saw the previous year, coming back and recovering, things that those students had to be learning more. Right, it's kind of the best way to think about it, the higher the SGP is, like, the more they learn compared to other kids.
Yeah.
Right, that's, that's the simplest way to think about it. So, um, that's good that we're getting, right, we're getting back in track, uh, on that. Firstly, we talked through that a lot about what that means with the ELA. Um, this is just, this is our math, right? Um, first, uh, diagnostic, you're seeing relative strengths in, in sixth grade, but, um, you know, gonna, we're gonna have to keep pushing that. SGP's, uh, getting up there to where we want it to be, you know, 50 or better is ideal. Um, 60 is really deep, um, but those are, those SGP's, as far as Star is concerned, higher than sometimes what we've seen in math, so that's cool. And you feel free to chime in on this anywhere you want, just. And yes, uh, for science, just a reminder, this is only taken in eighth grade at the middle school level. Um, you can see the, the, uh, bottom left where just really, uh, more or less maintaining with the state. Um, when you compare that, which we don't have here, but compared to our dark districts, um, we've stayed steady at the upper end of our dark districts, uh, whereas they have kind of been, the day that there's looks like a heart rate monitor. Um, and I, and, and I will say that I think a lot of the consistency, and, and, you know, and Amy and I have been talking about this, is what you haven't heard a lot about is curriculum review in the science, right, department. Um, there's a different model there that has had consistency and will have, continue to have consistency. Um, and, and you, you see, this is, this is, this is not the same dips, it's in line with where the state is going for the most part. I do also theorize, uh, one thing you cannot get away from is that every MCAS test is a reading comprehension test. That's just, it, it, it is what it is, okay? So, um, there's a reading comprehension component to that. I do feel as we continue to strive for literacy across the curriculum, as we continue to see our ELA scores start to continue to rise, I do think that might be a missing piece on this, is really what are these complex scientific questions actually have to be? Especially when I haven't learned this since sixth grade. Right, they don't just ask you eighth-grade curriculum, it's, it's a little more of a comprehensive test, so. Um, but you know, I, you can see a lot of pictures here of what was going on in the, um, in, in the science center and science classrooms, and that is not necessarily captured on this, this particular type of data. So there's not a lot to report here, we got one dot, it's the first year that it counted, uh, towards anything. Um, really hard to sort of know what this means for us, it was the Boston Globe did put out something just noting that the civics across the state wasn't sort of what you'd expect to see with other.
Where is the state dot?
That's not showing it, but if you look over on the right, the top right, you might be where we fell, we're just slightly below the state. It's a great bar.
Okay.
Um, we had gone through it with the social studies, our civic teachers in grade A, they did release the questions, um, so we went through.
So it's already like, we go way back 30-something years when this was put in place. That's what this was meant to be, I know we've attacked a lot of other things to it. This is the first year our civics teachers have a chance to have a data team meeting that is specific to this state-level calibrated test where they can then look at their curriculum and make decisions. Like, all the things that Michelle was just talking to at length about, we have IXL and we can do this, we make decisions in the groupings, like, that is data-informed work. Um, so I know MCAS, like, it's got its fans, it's got its detractors, but they were, they were right after that, you know, the eighth-grade civics team was like, Kate, can we, we want, Dave's out, can we look at this and see, it makes a decision? So, you know, that, that's, that's a really strong practice that we have going on and spreading across the school, so it's fun to shove that up, but that's a big deal.
And part of, also, part of the primary for eighth-grade civic showcase, which I don't think we got a picture in this slideshow, but I know some of you have come, many of you have come to visit our civic showcase in the spring. And it's incredible the work that kids do to actually make, make change in their community in time. For planning for that for the spring.
Uh, hold on a minute, please, we, we, okay. Um, here's going to be, not a lot of words, this, a lot of great images. Um, I want folks on the panel, if you, you know, you, you see a thing that, you know, you've, then what you're doing, give us just a quick one-sentence summary of what you're seeing there, because there's a lot of really great things happening here. Um, this actually came from Omele Academy over the summer. We had a group, the Summer Sustainability Squad, one of, kind of one of their little capstones was a painting of a mural, which we now have hanging in our, um, cafeteria hall.
So, so part of, oh, go ahead, uh, let me just give you a little example, which is this. Um, MCAS and Star will never capture all of, all the great things that happen at our schools, okay? They are indicators that help us to learn where we are on, on those tests. And they're important indicators that help us, you know, can help us learn, um, how our curriculum, how our instruction matches to what the state expects, okay? So they'll never be the complete picture. Okay? But these folks do every day and their colleagues is they create the picture. And by showing these, something, and sharing with you as we do, some of the other things are happening, uh, some, some of the real things are happening among students, tend to, to round out that picture, okay? Um, because schools are complex places, um, amazing things happen every day in our schools. And it's hard to capture that if someone looks at a test score or test score alone. Um, it's hard to capture that if you look at, uh, just little reports or attendance reports, but having a more complete picture is helpful. That's really the, the intent here, and always, I will always remind everybody, both our staff and also the, you know, the public, especially, that it's this combination of really rich experiences that happen every day between students and, and students, other students, and students and staff, and also what those, all those things lead, you know, lead to on a, on a, on tests as well. Um, can't do one of these for well, need to do both well. And, um, and every day, um, very commonly, folks are mainly are, are working at that and trying to get better and better at it. But that's sort of my pitch on, on why these photos and what they capture.
Can I also say, I mean, Amy is here, and I've known Amy and Ben to, you know, Science Center for, since it was open. Really, um, since some of the labs were built, and having a dot on one, you know, having, having the data just ever captures what's happening in the area of science in our middle school. I mean, it's, you know, when I say excellence, I look at our most advanced center. So I would love for you to talk about anything that's like really related to what, to what you've been intimately involved in when that comes up.
Um, the central focus, uh, is that Voice and Choice. Um, it's, uh, the, the focus is on the, um, we've been working through an iterative process um, at, at very early, uh, stages of redesigning the upfront of the school. Um, and obviously with, um, a huge support of GEF. Um, part of that process was getting, um, students to look at preliminary concepts, not even designs, but just these are concepts that we're doing, um, and they got to give very constructive feedback. They, it's, it's everything you expect out of Voice and Choice. There was an agency for those students to be able to, um, say how they like to use the space, what they liked about certain concepts, what they didn't like about certain concepts. And those were really rolled into, you know, excellent designs, so that was a great experience that we offered them.
Yeah, no, um, so the picture with the flag, um, this was, I believe, our anger house, um, students in their civic class. They had made a star flag outside, it was kind of tattered and torn, and so they went through a process getting the flag, did they get it donated or?
Actually, uh, GHS helped us out, um, and, and they, and they were able to get us one, but this was really something driven by students saying, you think that, that that should probably be better represented, and, uh, you know, we agreed, and, and they were able to see sort of the, the, uh, the fruits of their efforts in that.
And it was done pretty quickly too, from when they like noticed it, and then they went through this process. Um, the voice, um, right under words, the voice employees, they put on our voice boards from the commons, um, from last spring. Um, and all students put together, you know, they just decided they wanted to decorate the bulletin board for our day. And each of the little butterflies or flowers has something written on it about how they could make the earth better. And then we have one of our former eighth-grade students, who's now currently in ninth grade, telling our sixth graders about how awesome.
Uh, cue Amy Donnelly.
Oh, my goodness, um, so in the middle, you see, uh, seventh, I mean, on the left, you see a seventh-grade class, um, experimenting with some hot air balloons that, um, Dave Brown dug out of somewhere, and, and they were, were launched from the lower commons, you can see it being released up into the upper commons, so this was part of their, they're looking at thermal energy and trying to dispel the myth that heat rises, so we, we never really like to hear that heat rises. So, um, they're heating up the air in the balloon and releasing it through the commons and then timing it using different sized balloons and the amount of energy needed to heat the air in the balloon. Um, and what they're doing in the middle?
I have no idea.
I have no idea, that's in Jason White's classroom.
That was the aspiration for the, um, the whole dispelling the myth that heat rises.
That's it, right? So that's some of their work with, are they working with calorimeters or?
Um, they have a little propeller.
Okay.
As the heat and the candle.
That is in his room, yes. And then, um, just the really sixth-grade rite of passage on the right would be the, the frog dissection. We've already been asked probably by 50 students when they're going to get to dissect frogs. So, um, that's part of their body systems unit toward the end of the school year. Um, so that's last year, sixth graders very excited about their frogs, they're particularly large this year.
I, the, the big thing is doing the science fosters curiosity, and that's so important. Very hard to be curious about a textbook, right, it just is. Uh, but doing the science, it, that's the engagement, it's, and you know, we use that term engagement a lot, but what it is, it's just, it's being curious now, now. And, and that's science that's more, I'm curious about something, I want to figure out how to smart it, right? So, um.
Just engagement.
Engagement here, uh, collaboration, uh.
Yeah, a lot of them overlap, you know, you've got kids collaborating on a poster with the body systems in the top left. Um, bottom left, you have a Desmos lesson, um, it looks like, so the computers are open, but the teacher's sitting with the group of students having conversations about that.
And, and actually, Michelle, could you tell a little bit, uh, to briefly, but one of the benefits about how it most, like lends itself to the collaborative piece, even though it is on the computer?
So in our, so we have one-to-one computing at the middle school, but Desmos, um, fine, the kids will hide behind the screen, so a lot of the lessons are taught to students to one Chromebook. So in order to come together, make a decision on what's going to go into that Chromebook, there's a lot of discussion. So we're just using vocabulary and things like that. Also, it, every lesson in almost, I don't know, every third question asks you to explain your thinking. Um, and then Amy Ascarrolo for our upcoming PD has agreed to have a, um, trainer come in on a, uh, a language routine called Clearer and Stronger each time. So we'll be working on having them explain. Then we all discuss the explanations, and then we go back and we revise our explanations. So that as kids are thinking about what does it mean to communicate, we don't just do it in words in ELA or social studies or science, we do it in words in math as well. Um, because we want them, one of the things that was really interesting is on the MCAS, there was a question that was literally trying to see if they knew the definition of a radius. And we were like, we cannot do that wrong because it was so easy, and we, so it's telling us, like, we also need to make sure they don't just know the vocabulary today, but they own the vocabulary. So we'll be working on that through the Desmos setup, so.
Thank you. Um, you, you know what the KPMV is.
They were at KPM Museum.
Yeah, so it was six years last year at the KPM Museum, uh, working together. And then, of course, we've got our, uh.
Was that the one from, um, Juneteenth, or was that a different one?
It's one school's parade.
Yes, it was in June. Yeah, so they always go down for Juneteenth, um, because they have a great program down there, and we're still in school during that time. And they developed it the first year that Juneteenth was a a holiday, a national holiday. Um, and because the cam green is like right there, you can go down there for a two-hour period and come back, and you can go down all day, but there's no buses, it's safe and easy to get into. So it, it's been a good thing because kids carry it forward into knowing what Juneteenth is and stuff like that, right? Whereas like a lot of adult families don't still know what it's about, so. Whereas like a lot of adult families don't still know what it's about, so.
Uh, thank you, Michelle. And then uh, we've got our P E teachers and, and probably maybe help sometimes they turn uh, project venture, uh, very collaborative because, you know.
They all have a whole vetnet. Yes, they do. And then we have our door decorating contest, um, which the kids get very excited about, some teachers get very competitive. Um, but the um, advisory classes decorate their door in some sort of wintery theme. They all.
Of course, if we all remember, there was a big uh, pop tour going on, uh, this time last year, the, the Eras Tour. So this is, that's the, uh, the social sites classroom in our Paleolipic. And right there. So the bottom right, uh, perspective drawing takes place in the art class. Creative thinking there, um, and, and what we've been working on over the last few years with the, them is now, as they're learning these uh, two-point perspectives and three-point perspectives. That's also been the lens through which um, the students are contributing to the um, sculpture that ended up out front, which we are entering into phase two of as well. So um, it's, it's not only, it's creative thinking about what is my design that I want to do, things like that, but also the critical thinking piece of. This is going to turn into an actual structure that's going to fit on the building, how do we do that, what are the limitations, things like that. Amy, and is there a few more science?
There's a few more science, so um, upper right is the, the Birds, Iguiman Tech Room. Um, that's Dave Brown working with a group of upcoming fifth graders. We hosted all the elementary fifth graders, all elementary school fifth graders for a day of STEM last year. Where they came and worked in um, four of the different labs, rotated through, um, looks like they're doing, they built their paddle boats. And placed them in the tracks there. Um, middle, lower middle is um, one of our sail cars. So that is a program that was designed by Dave Brown at Essex Schubold Museum, how many years ago, maybe?
Seventy.
Seventy, seventy, seventy to eighty years ago, um, and then came to O'Malley as part of our weather and climate unit in eighth grade. So rich in content, um, ties in with our eighth grade math unit on um, transformations. So the timing is perfect for that, um, a lot of physics, air pressure, changes in air pressure, um, reasons for wind. And it, it, the unit starts in September, runs through November. Our sail cars are being built right now, it's, it's scaling up from their Lord's eyes that we've tested. Um, it's pretty exciting, a lot of work, um, kids, never forget it. Um, upper left is, looks like our aquaponic system, another long project in the sixth, the eighth grade. On six to eight weeks, who are responsible for building, plumbing, planting and maintaining, maintaining an aquatic system with um. Half a dozen fish and probably ten plants in the water chemistry, looking at um. Cereal dilutions as they culture bacteria, looking for the bacteria that are running the system essentially. Without the bacteria, none of the magic works, so um, really in-depth project that ends in a salad day. Um, that is delicious and sometimes the first salad that some of the kids have ever eaten, they've told us. I've never had salad before, um, we, one thing we learned is that we can never buy enough.
And sometimes we're lucky and then the algebra kids will also be studying exponential growth at the same time as the bacteria is going on. And so uh, we get to talk about how bacteria reproduces and that causes the exponential growth and they will make those connections to that.
For time's sake here, literacy skills, I just wanted to focus on the bottom, uh, the one on the left here. Uh, this was um, our eighth grade going through, uh, working with Lane's Coven Theater Group, um, to better engage with their Shakespeare uh, unit. It's very, very challenging, it, it, we can come down to the middle school level, but that's how the rigors increase. I think a lot of us remember first things was that in high school. Did the, they, they came in, worked with the kids, um, got to do some fun things, but also helped them better understand uh, Shakespearean language. And then that was culminated in um, the actor acting out some of the key scenes that the students had read. And uh, probably one of the best days just did that, those twenty minutes when I was watching how engaged those kids were. And they, they understood Shakespeare and what was happening on stage, um, and so, you know, testament to the great activity that was brought by the eighth grade.
I give a shout out to Stephanie Kutcher, her grant writing and putting that together, a tremendous amount of work. To um, Fisher Education Foundation funded the grant to get Lane's Coven in. It involved days of classroom work with the staff from Lane's Coven. And then this performance, which, I mean, everyone should see if they're back this year, we should come down and see it's amazing, amazing.
And to like, we've had performances before in the school and kids are like. It was silent and they were so just engaged in what was going on because they were so well-prepared to see that production. So it was, it was a great day.
Uh, yeah, just, just here, you know, engagement is an important piece for us, seeing kids on their uh, computers, right? Um, working diligently, that is the main motive, uh, learning nowadays of standing on a screen, that probably means they're into it. But as Michelle said, we, we do have a lot of ways of making sure that it's not just them one-on-one with the computer. Field day up there, great, and then another uh, field trip that the students had, uh, bottom left, so just getting out of building, case in and of. Four, these are field trips, uh, and, and, and performances. Uh, so, you know, we've got kids, um, musical, uh, we are in Washington, D C, great trip. Um, and we've got a band performance there as well, just a lot of other opportunities and things that our kids are very fortunate to have access to. That's one on the right. Field trips, just, you know, noting like, I know a lot of people, they, oh, we used to do field trips, we still do field trips, they can have, building is really important. Either just um, a list of some that we've gone to, uh, some are, some are traditional and regular, like, I think we do them year after year. Uh, others are when they happen to be there, Holocaust traveling exhibition, obviously can't do that every year, but our eighth graders do go to the Holocaust Museum when they're down and watching. So get information there. All right, last pitch, obviously, we've talked a lot about what, you know, people are doing in the building every single day. Uh, to try to give the best educational experience you can to the students at O'Malley. And you know, there's still things we're working on, all right? Um, thought it'd be worthwhile though, I had maybe had some folks on here, uh, just, you know, some, how, how people, I think. The shift to middle school, I do think sometimes parents don't know what does it mean to help the school at this point? You know, they, is it, we, we don't do bake sales, we have fewer fundraisers and so it can kind, and your kid is wanting attendance, so. Just in, in, in hopes of helping to give people ideas of how you can help support a school. And in turn, you're supporting your child, I mean, what that looks like at the middle school level. Every day does matter, we, we cannot teach children that are not there, okay? So really, you know, uh, just doing everything we can as a father of a middle school student myself, I know it's not easy every morning. Uh, but really critical, kids are getting to school, getting to school on time, it just sets them up for success. It's, it's um, as, it's connected to all sorts of improved long-term outcomes, I mean, one in most ways, including graduation, but attendance. Uh, you, you hear the term, it's uh, correlation, not causation a lot, but yeah, with the tendency start to get to some of those causal relationships. So just really critical, we're getting our kids to school every day.
Little question on that, bring it up. So we got zero points for attendance and I believe last year was the same. So we gained no growth, it's not a two, it's not a three, it's a four, they aren't. We changed our attendance policy a couple of years ago. We've seen change in attendance by changing the policy.
Uh, no, but what happened last year is we were improving every year for three years.
We're getting zeros on that.
And then last year, we went down, so.
The year before, we got zero on the attendance growth as well.
I guess we're, I'm responding to you since zero change.
Zero growth. From that, what you showed on the first couple of.
You're correct, that Dusty's not giving us any points for, for the progress we made, okay? But two things, two things are, 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 are true. Until last year, we were improving every year for the last three years, okay? Attendance and absenteeism, crying absentee was going down, last year went backwards, okay? And I've, I've shown to you that and how, you know, districts around us, you know, um, improved. There are three districts that didn't, ours barely marbled, okay? Um, that's just, that's just the data, I've shown them, okay?
When do we get an attendance report? I don't remember, the last one was a long time ago.
Yeah, we, uh, we get an old report on uh, November fifth, and then in December, we'll be.
So I can keep my questions still.
So, but, but that's, I mean, that's just, that's, that's the data, so we're improving across all areas.
I just wanted to see it over the past couple of years since we put this policy in place. And not blame COVID.
Since COVID, that we put that.
Everything is since COVID, but I'd like to see a little bit of information that was before COVID, when we didn't have the policy. In other words, how is this policy reacting with attendance? Not just since COVID, because COVID created havoc in many different ways with attendance. But where will we in two thousand sixteen or seventeen versus where we are now to see if there's a difference? Not just since COVID, but that's just since the policy. It was right after COVID.
It was not right after, it was like.
Yeah, but still, we are, we had the effects of COVID impacting attendance. If that's helpful, you need to have, if I ask a lot of questions in December.
You know, we, we mentioned some of the routines and things that we are shifting at the school that we're paying attention to, that we're making sure we're on the same page on. Um, one of the reasons that's so important is teens thrive on consistency and predictability. So, you know, as much as possible, I know life is busy and there's a lot of things going on. But the more routines families can have at home, more predictability they can have at home, um, the, the better you're setting your child up for success when they come to school. Um, establishing a time and place for homework, and if that is coming to our homework book, we've got for three days a week, that's great. But we want to know, the, the child should know that's the expectation being set for them. Have a routine around charging Chromebooks nightly, um, it, it's, you know, that's a, that's a big thing that. You'd be amazed at the disruption to a classroom if three kids out of twenty-two come in with it, with a dead Chromebook. It, it's a serious loss of learning time, um, and it just is what it is. But it's, now kids aren't, aren't sitting in their assigned seat because they need to have access to an outlet. Well, that student maybe had preferential treatment, they're supposed to be sitting to the front of the room, but, but it, 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 it goes on and on and on and it's, you. So that's helpful, very, very helpful. Um, we, you know, we have our independent reading, encouraging that at home, having a routine around that. Set bedtime, really important, um, and at that point, uh, really, really critical, I want to talk more about this on the next slide. Highly encourage folks to not allow phones in the bedroom at bedtime.
I'll, I'll be clear, there is no reason to have a phone in the bedroom for a teenager, okay? It can only create harm, okay? There's got to be, whatever you need a phone for in the bedroom, it can probably be done by another device. There's access to many things that could harm them. And I, and I believe we need to be saying that clearer and clear to parents, they need to hear that from us.
Not only phones, but also iPads.
That leads onto the last slide, which we're going to dive into that just a little bit more.
You've shared these with parents, apparently, or you will.
Yeah, no, I'll be, I'll be kind of quitting this thing tonight, yeah, the updates.
And can I just say, as a parent, it's very helpful, like, we'll get something from the house that's a reminder on this stuff and it's very helpful.
Yeah.
Um, as a parent.
Yeah.
To get those reminders, those texts to say like, people are not charging Chromebooks. Is it also giving you an opportunity to say to your kid, I heard that, you know, it's not just you or it's not you, but we gotta get that. It just helps with the routine from a parent.
It's almost like we should set up some sort of phone system, like we have the emergency system to text all the students and charge their Chromebooks every night. Know they're on the.
They don't all have phones.
Well, hopefully, hopefully, we're going to be reducing that.
You know, the ability to do that with parents through Kenbo?
Yeah, yeah.
Because Kenbo uh, also auto-translates, it allows us to also connect all of our M L parents as well. So this is, I think, what Laura's talking about.
Does it go to them as a text or does it go to them as an email?
It goes to the parents as a text.
It actually is what they prefer, so the parents can put if they want it as an email or a text.
Okay.
And then it gets sent to them based on their preferences.
And especially.
And you get a text.
After a long weekend or over the break, those, those.
That's helpful.
Most houses have set that up now, the future send on those things, so.
And I was thinking, now, that's just for like, end of the term or midterms or report cards are coming out with just like reminders. That might be important reminders coming out Picture Day, so I'll like send the next.
You sent one that said reminder check school brains, that's a really good one. You know, it just, there's so much happening in everybody's life and then, and, and middle school's really different than elementary. So anyway, just.
I have a comment, uh, the, the middle paragraph there, reduce child's expectations of privacy is, uh, you know, expectations. I understand that, I agree with that, the, the, the one on the, it is actually the real world. I actually tell my kids the opposite, that the people you meet online aren't, like, don't assume that they're your friends, right? She's, sometimes chats with people, though she's playing games. I, I actually instilled the, uh, uh, the opposite.
Yeah, so it is really the real world. Appreciate, I think, the, the nuance there and, and, you know, in a phrase of that, like, I, like, I, I actually agree with your point, right? Um, I think, uh, from the middle school uh, educator's perspective, what we mean is students think they, they can do. Uh, a lot, if not anything, in the digital realm without facing consequences in the analog world.
Yeah.
And that is very far from the truth.
Yeah.
They need to understand that group chats that they're engaged in, um, where it's sensitive, you're going through the message understanding, reposting. Um, those all have consequences here in the real world. Um, and, and so that's the piece there that, and I know, and I've heard this, right? And, and I, you know, and I get it, we want our students to have that sort of structured independence. Um, our children have the structured independence and we want to trust them, um, and we want to do, but, you know. Never going through your child's phone is like letting them have a separate fun house that you don't have keys to. It's not like not going through their closets, it's what they have access to and what they can do. It's like, imagine just all the worst things in the world and that's in a warehouse that they can go to whenever they want to. And you thinking you're not allowed to open that door.
And that's being fed to them, not only that they can go to, but the algorithm is feeding them.
So that's kind of that, that piece about the reduced expectation of privacy. You know, I think it's just very clear that all children should know, they do not own their phones and they should have very little expectation of privacy. Um, their parent or guardian.
Yeah.
That at any point, I know your code, I, or I have the face, you know, recognition. And without your permission, I may be going through and searching your texts, right? Um, that account, because if they can. We probably all remember doing something sneaky when we were that age. It was out in the real world, you had to act, people had eyes on you, it won't, you, you had to really try and you probably couldn't do anything too bad, right? Because it was hard. The phones, if they do not think that eyes are on it, it, it's just, it's, it's too much, the, the, the temptation and, and. Uh, so that, so that's what I mean by that, uh, Keith, and so that's, because I appreciate your point, you're, and I agree with your point on that. That, I, I guess, that's what I meant about this one.
Um, and that. What you're saying is parents should work so their, that child doesn't have an expectation of privacy on their phone.
Yes.
To, to explain it in a way that your kids may understand, when we have these issues that they come up, one of the conversations that I have, I let kids know. Along these lines is when you screw up on social media, you can't just respawn in the lobby and start. It's not a video game, it's different than that. And that's what we mean when we have a conversation, that it is, it is the real world. If, if you're making mistakes, you can't just wipe that clean.
Right.
Anything that you're going to put out there, it's out there, you've already done it, it can't be, it can't be taken back. And so it's that conversation that we're having when these things come up.
I appreciate the message.
That's why we want to have the conversations with all parents, not just the school tables, with all parents, because they need to understand this and be looking at their kids' phones on a regular basis.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I, I, I butt heads with my son right now, he's in seventh grade and, you know, he thinks that he has. The expectation of freedom and, and privacy from me and I'm like, no, that's not how this works. the expectation of freedom and and privacy from me, and I'm like, no, that's not how this works.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, but it's like, you know, and on the other side, though, you know, what I was trying to say is that, like, my 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 little girl sometimes meets friends online, and I'm like, do you know that person in the real world? Like, that's what I mean by that's not really the real world. You don't know that person. You don't even know who that, you know, even even if that kid that that might be pretending to be a kid.
Right, which then, you know, lead could lead to a real world problem.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, so, um, so that's, you know, you know, and just, I'm gonna skip over the fourth bullet there. Um, middle school students should not be on social media. Um, there's the piece of the user agreement, which says they need to be at least thirteen, some of them are older, okay? Um, and and that parents can help be held liable should criminal activity take place and you, even though you may not know your kid downloaded it or they just said it was okay, um, leave the user agreements aside, they should not have access to social media on their phones. Um, they can text, right? I'm not, I'm not saying, I don't wanna sound like a Luddite and say that kids shouldn't ever have phones, but it's, it is the world we're living in. But social media, um, is algorithmically driven. It feeds, uh, what we would consider, you hear the term clickbait, but, uh, yeah, I made the comment that one of my, one of the presentations last year, I will remind you, like, extreme behaviors are getting normalized in the palm of our kids.
Right, desensitizing.
Because they are seeing scroll after scroll after scroll after scroll, and that's what the algorithm is designed to do. It drives engagement. They do not care what is causing that engagement. It's just that they're getting it, right? So they're getting, it's 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 for a hundred different reasons. Really should not have any access to social media at all. None of them, it doesn't, Facebook, Instagram, it doesn't matter. Um, they they are all driven by the same principles, which is to generate large companies money. It with whatever's left in the.
And addiction.
Yeah. I think part of the challenge for us is how do we, with all the stuff we're trying to do in our schools and across our schools, how we communicate some meaningful messages that give parents and families, you know, the the ability to push, to support, to to say to their children, no, this isn't okay, or or I need to do this, not that, or I need, you know, and and we can help with that. The message we give families can can give them that digital level of support, push, or as it can be in families. So it's not, it's not something we can easily take on in a large way, but, you know, it, but as as team here says, you know, this is where parents can help. You know, they help us get the message out, they help get a message to other folks, but I think as I mentioned, the more and more that our schools gotta present to the parents to give them that support.
And and it makes a tough choice. Any of my assistant principals up there could tell you the number of instances that are brought into the school that started with a, you know, whether we see a screenshot or whether we see the actual message, and it is nine thirty at night, twelve thirty AM, two o'clock in the morning, okay? These are not situations that were initiated within the school. Of course, they go into the school, okay, and also going back to the previous thing about good habits, should never have been sent at that time if that student hadn't had that phone. That's, they're up too late. Okay, they're coming in exhausted, they're coming in anxious because there's a potential conflict, like, there there's just a lot, a lot of things, and the hardest things that we have to deal with that cause the most emotional damage to our students now originate on cell phones. That is the way of the world. Um, so the less access they have to the social media apps, the less, uh, the more, uh, eyes on that families have for those kids to prompt them to make sure they're being responsible with that technology. Um, it ju- it just helps us. It helps you, it helps the child a lot. It helps us because the child now has the proper support that they need to manage these devices, which are, I I think you all agree, a number of adults struggle to manage well and have good habits on, uh, myself included sometimes. So that's, you know, that, so it's just, it's our ask. Um, we are here to help. We're happy to, you know, have conversations with parents, with kids, if they feel they get a unified front, we're here. Um, but those those are really strong ways in which we could get support from them.
So how does cell phone policy working at the middle school, if it worked out?
Yeah, I mean, a majority of the time, students do not have cell phones on them if that's what you're asking.
That's what I'm asking.
That's true. However, does cellphone usage trickle into the schools?
No, 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 I'm definitely, I'm totally stuck that conversation. I was just asking, you know, is it being enforced?
Yes.
Yeah, great.
So one thing my early years taught me is not to say say the most typical news for the end. I think we just did that, unfortunately, because what I don't wanna lose for the very clear and body message around cellphone use and social media stuff, which 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 is a very real issue among, you know, all all young people, okay, and those too. I don't wanna lose what, you know, ninety-nine percent of the presentation was about, which was, you know, workers being done in O'Malley, okay, and the and the, you know, trying to capture this team, trying to capture what so many people are doing, you know, a hundred, hundred plus people doing it every day, plus a hundred students, um, really trying to both have, you know, really rich experiencing, rich, engaging, supportive, safe health experiences and really strong academic results, okay? Um, both of those things can exist, need to exist, um, and you guys are, you know, just really presented shown, you know, just a, still even that, a small snapshot of of the of the variety of areas. You know, about two hours ago, we were talking about certification and the big changes there, and two and a half hours ago, we were talking about um, work on structural, structural progress, you know, and curriculum work as well as led by, you know, done by teachers, like, you know, support from administrators. Um, so it's 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 like really significant work. Um, and, you know, we're hoping, we're working that those, you know, little improvements we saw, you know, in NCAT, for example, is, you know, the the leading, you know, indicator of of, you know, more results to come. But I don't want us to lose all of that in the very important message about cell phones.
I wanna say something, but you go first.
Uh, yeah, I just reiterate what Ben said. I mean, I can remember sitting here last year specifically saying to Kate, well, we'll see. You know, like, I think the scores were looking very good, and I left saying we're in a tight spot over there at O'Malley, and now I feel like, you know, this has been some really positive news, a lot of positive things happening, and I think that's a tribute to the work that you all are putting in. It's easy for us to kind of take a ten thousand foot view, but the work that you're putting in and and the and the and the things that are happening at O'Malley are really, really positive. I I think that the last piece, the cellphone, the social media pieces, that's a collective responsibility. That's not, can't put that on teachers, educators, that's too much, and, uh, I I I think that's a separate, separate gig that involves a lot of different stakeholders, but a real credit to the work that you're doing, things are trending in the right direction, and it's wonderful to see, so thank you for your hard work.
So I should win first. Um, I agree a hundred percent with what Bill said. There's a lot of good work going down, but I I have, I say this every year, and I'm gonna say it again. So been on this committee for a long time. O'Malley's not there. What we've seen this year is that putting more people and more resources into that school is working. But my takeaway tonight is we do not have enough resources at O'Malley. We don't have the support the kids need. We've done wonderful identifying everything. We know how to fix it, but we can't fix it with status quo. We're not even at state average in a lot of areas. My goal isn't getting to state average. My goal is getting above state average, but we've been below state average eighteen years I've been here now. So everything I heard tonight is so promising. The enthusiasm, the work that's being done is incredibly awesome. But the fact is, unless we do more than what we're doing now, we're not gonna see those scores go up. We need support systems in the classroom. A teacher can't teach to five different groups, block after block after block, and be productive all day. That, I can't even imagine how draining. The fact is, we need more support for our students so that the teacher can teach and the child, the student can get support while they're in class. It can't just be doing the AI lessons, which is great that we have that, and believe it or not, a lot of districts out west going towards California are having AI teachers in the classroom now, so I believe there is a use for that. But we don't have the interventions need to get over that hump, and until we have an honest discussion citywide, not just here with the mayor and the city council that are out there, everyone's saying how they need our schools to improve, until we invest in our schools and put more resources in the classroom so that the teachers and the people at this table can do their job, we are never gonna even get to state state averages, is how my takeaway tonight. And that is so sad and disappointing, because I know we all wanna get there. I know we're trying as hard as we can, but the answer, my solution, isn't gonna happen unless there's more support in the classrooms. And I have to say that because I don't know how many more times I'll be able to say that again, be my last year, but eighteen years, and we're not much different than when we were eighteen years ago. And that's that. And it's not because of anything, you're, we're doing the right things. I believe we are, and when I'm conversations with people, I tell them there are amazing things going on in O'Malley. The problem is the the students that we're teaching today learn differently than they were when I was in class, and the support systems are not there to help them achieve. And that's what I would, I would love to have some sort of audit that says what, what districts are performing high? What do their classrooms look like? How many parents are in their classroom? How much? What different professional development are they getting? Although I can't imagine we don't offer enough professional development, it's so much. But what is it that we are not getting over that hump to see we're above state average or more? We're gonna just exhaust ourselves doing what we're doing. Although we are seeing progress in areas, the special education, that's huge. So what do we do? We invested in special education this year. We need, the school committee needs to commit into more resources into the classroom so that all students can achieve and get above state average if they have that capability. And I never hear that solution. I don't know what the answer is, but I I have to say it every year, and like I said, this might be my last time saying it, but status quo is not gonna work with the amount of resources we have. We need more at this grade level. We need to really invest into middle-aged schoolchildren, what social media is doing to them, our parents involved in us. We've got vaping problems, cellphone problems. There's so much going on at this age group that we never experienced, and we're not giving our kids enough support to get over that hump. So I'm sorry if it brings anybody down. That's not my intention. I am so appreciative of each and every one of you and what you're trying to do. I just feel like you're gonna be burnt out like half our staff is, and rightfully so, because doing the same thing over or trying to improve with just the amount of people that we have is not gonna work. No, exactly. But I wanna have that from the generator at some point.
We're working group right now, right? That was part of our agreement, which is that, and staff, and and look at what we can do to help this get better.
It's a budget issue, too. We also have a budget.
It is a budget.
Schedule that shows what positions we'd ideally add this year and next year. I mean, we know we can't. There's not money falling from the sky.
Right, no, I get that.
But there is, there is an awareness of what other positions will help provide more capacity and support.
I mean, I heard tonight, tier two, you know, it's gone, not gone, but it's been reduced, and clearly, we're seeing the results for that.
No, it's gone.
It's gone, right. I've been saying since the day that, since the budget got cut, it's like, what are we doing, right? And I've been hearing bits and pieces, but you have scores that are reflecting, reflecting the fact that we need to intervention. And we don't have it.
Running now, and you all live here. I don't live here. But the message was that you really need help with the cell phones, you know, doing some basic things. We need, and we need what you said, you know, we need the community to understand that we're all here to educate the children.
Exactly.
And that we all have some role, and we need sort of the children are all that. And so it's up to all of us to advocate for that.
Very great. Thank you.
I am so appreciative to see so many of your leaders with you tonight. And then I am encouraged by what you are doing, by by the real details of the work you talked about. That my colleague, I agree with knowing that, um, I'm hearing different approaches, and I'm hearing, um, you know, the addition of special education, you know, program leader, just the way you can articulate things that we are doing, you know, differently or in in addition, um, to support kids. So I, you know, I know the good work for curriculum and everything, you know, will have results, and it's showing some results, and I think, you know, we hear about people being more excited about how they're teaching and and the tools they have, so I leave always with the idea that we are really doing a lot of the right things and, um, within the constraints we have financially. So know that we know we like more money and more more staff to support, but I personally could not be more appreciative and and I.
This is maybe reflected a little bit, but I also heard today things that I haven't really heard in our mainly present teaching for, like, in six years for me. And it, and a lot of it has to do with curriculum, because there wasn't always standard curriculum, middle school, as hard as that was to believe. Um, and so, and I also was really glad to hear honestly that the math curriculum isn't everything you hoped. So you're looking for supplements, like, that's real, and, um, I just, I feel like it's a hard thing to move a community, and yes, I agree more. And we all know, like, you know, money doesn't come from everywhere, but, and you know, there are hopeful signs, and that doesn't always happen in an O'Malley presentation. And so, um, I just wanna sort of put that out there and say thank you. And it's also a late night for you guys, so we might let you go, um, but, uh, just, you know, it's hard, hard work. That age group is so hard. I have one myself. It's really hard. And I don't know how you work with them all day, every day. So God bless, but, um, yeah, just there are hopeful signs for me in there, so thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you very much for your time, and most importantly, thank you not only for tonight, but everything else, but doing all your work, work every single day. Um, as a middle school teacher myself, former school teacher myself, I can understand reviewing a bit of the challenge of it, but even if you bridge you coming tonight, more important, all the students. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill, your colleagues that have come.
Going to move. Do you know, we gotta get ready moving?
Yes.
Yes. Um.
Start printing.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Good work.
Last piece includes of, of this part of agendas, it's the budget calendar. So I'll share that right now. Um, so so the budget calendar, so, um, uh, um, we're gonna be doing a budget slightly different this year, but I mean, not really, it's just moving the the process up a little bit. You have a clear, uh, 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 role here earlier on. So something other school could do, but we haven't done, um, in this way before is is to, um, work on and have the district leaders, the teacher team, when I say that, I mean, um, uh, principals, department directors, myself, our district leaders, okay? Um, uh, bring to you priorities in December, um, for you to vote on, and then we create the budget from, okay? So it's gonna just, um, moving up the process, that part of the process a little bit, so then we can do this, you know, do the work in January and February to get you, you know, a budget that's based on, um, budget priorities that you approve, okay? And have a little more of a stronger role in. Um, so that's what you see is different is from January on, pretty much the same, it's the same process. The first two steps here are, um, coming, the first step here is coming a little bit sooner. Um, is really important for the committee to have, um, defined budget priorities. Again, I know this happens in many other other school districts, um, and then then we build the budget from that. But it's sort of a public statement, statement about the budget priorities, it's having your acknowledgement of them earlier on, so then we build a budget from there. As I said, then beginning in February, we'll present what those priorities mean across the different, um, departments and schools, and then all with the typical approach in terms of, you know, B and F. And then all with the typical approach in terms of, you know, B and F, um, uh, against the budget first. Uh, then the school group gets it happening. And, um, uh, we present the initial plan in March, then April, uh, B and F music. Um, and then by the end of April, you're going to the public hearing budget, during public hearing. Um, then that means to, uh, the vote by the school committees, the vote of the mayor. And, and proceeds, proceeds to the council. And then once they go around and move it, it comes back to you from the bottom. So, um, just wanna highlight just that initial part, which we want to take.
So February tenth is a Tuesday and it says before the school. So that's probably supposed to be in February eleven?
Uh, I'll, I'll, I'll check those dates, I'm gonna check those dates.
The idea is to get the priorities out early at this year.
Yeah, and so that allows us to then build a bunch of priorities which you, you've already weighed in on and, um, uh, which, yeah. Uh, that's just, that's for the updated forms, but just to sort of signal that's, that process, we made the daily work on, um, the first step. We're gonna just, you know, we just all have principles, others, um, on that one, those priorities, we've already actually begun that process.
Uh, next item of business are subcommittee reports. We have building and finance subcommittee meeting on October fifteenth, two thousand.
Well, we went on our two hundred and fifteen, that first topic will student activity reports.
You wanted to run a board?
Sure, that'd be great. Yeah, alright, thank you, that'd be great.
Okay, fifteen to you.
Well, the programs that may be, so.
Fifteen, where do you go?
Sixteen.
Okay, so on October sixteen, programs that can be met to go over a few policies. Um, the first one we're going to discuss is a new policy that required fiduciary. To create and to clarify the middle school pathway exploration. Policy of CBTB and how it had been part of that.
Great, why does it know?
So over the past several years, we, this is mainly, um, regional school issue, it's. Affects us to a much lesser degree. Sending schools to regional schools. They have had, uh, limited access to information from the schoolers. So they can do mailings, mass mailings, that type of thing. And they've been complaining to Desi three years. So in order, in response. Desi developed this, um, policy. Criteria so that it will open up those sharing of information. Between regional and comprehensive schools, I suppose, and their sending.
It's a two, two purpose. One is to make sure that kids are learning about tech programs and career programs earlier. Um, and all kids learning about that. Um, at the same time, make sure that the regional techs. Have access to students so they can recruit and, and pitch and market as well. So it's sort of both there, you know. And one really benefits students, family income, you know, uh, types of information about, um, pathways. And one helps the, uh, regional techs as well. We're one of the places that has both, you know, so we have to create a, a policy around both how we're helping our middle school students. Our local tech programs, but also in our case, Essex Tech. So in terms of turning the policy, which we have in front of you. Um, so we'll go over some of the pieces here. And then, and also I just wanna sort of back up and say. Programs are getting worked through, Desi has given, unlike typical cases, they've given some very specific things that gotta be in this policy. Okay, and also sort of points out she hasn't gone along. But that's why there's a few different cues that normally see a policy, okay? Uh, first paragraph here, it's her laying out what our responsibility is, and, and, and what the point of the policy is, okay? I'm sorry, let me back up. Desi is requiring us to submit this policy to them for their approval. Okay, it's not, that's not anything I've ever done with a policy closely, okay? And so that's, so I, probably thinking we're writing this in a way that we need, they will see the things they expected. And that first paragraph is something, that would be, actually the first two paragraphs, let me explain the second paragraph. Second paragraph sort of explains how we do career and, and path exploration at, at the high school, okay? Because what they want, wanna see is how work we're gonna do on middle, middle school pathway exploration for CBTB connects to the high school. Okay, so I felt the need to lay out in the second paragraph, how we do that. Okay, that's the, so then we can, otherwise. And then the next paragraph there was high school CBTP pattern options, that's explaining to them. What our options are because we're both a, a member of, of Essex Tech. Ascending District, but also have our own, so I need, but I feel we need for them to understand for us, for everyone, I mean, not only that, but to, you know. Our people understand, our, you know, local folks, that we have these pieces, our own, and we're gonna, you know, uh. We're gonna add, uh, we're gonna, um, process, um, conform and advise. Um, our own, uh, our minor students about our own code. And also in that last paragraph on the first page, we're also members of NSAT, and so we're gonna make sure we, you know, play with them well as possible. So they, they pause there, any questions, commentary on any, that, that first page? The second page literally get into, and that's about what, um, of, of what it is that we'll do. And we lay out here, um. Uh, exactly what we'll do, not exactly what we'll do, because we don't wanna be that prescriptive, okay? But we will say that, that it'll include, um, so our, 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 our own program. And Essex Tech will include on-campus assemblies, we use it for educational information, I guess. And per, purposely putting a word or there, okay, because it's not all, we're not considering all of them, okay? School tours, um, it's important in that paragraph on school tours, and this is, comes across in the guise of Desi. Is that we're clear in a couple of things, that if kids take tours of Essex Tech, that they're not considered a machine. Um, and then also if they take tours, uh, the, the post-school Essex Tech provides transportation. Because you see all those things in that, hey, school tour, we, we organize them to go to, what happened during the school day. So it's like a field trip, okay, so they're, they're present, right? And then the last piece, um, and it clearly says that NSAT will provide for students that are at schools. Most events, we're gonna share, um, information about, um, author high school, our CBT programs on the district website. Um, and also, um, have a link to NSAT as well, or Essex Tech. And that includes information sharing, online resources. There actually is in, in, it's, it's, in the, in the, in the days, I suppose, if teens are here, that we'll have that online, basically. You know, our own programs, but also reaching to Essex Tech, okay? Any questions there?
So we don't have it online now, obviously, because this hasn't been approved by Desi?
No, we don't, probably, yeah, because Desi deadline here is November first. Okay, we're a little, little flexible on that. Uh, they're not, we are, a minute later.
Is, do we get schedules from NSAT?
We get schedules of.
Well, it says by October fifteenth, we will publish pertinent information about vocational school options. So does NSAT give us their schedule?
We, we will link to, we'll link to that, to whatever, if you want us to link to that, yeah. And if it basically, you know, if you think of like, here are our programs. And here's NSAT, then go, go, you know, go see that, okay? We'll have it, we'll, you know, have it. And then, um, notice that for that piece. Before I get the record admission, we've got the age depending questions. Okay, um, the last piece, the last, the four bullets that go on, on the last page are things that are required by us really. And it's, the first bullet is about, um. We'll provide necessary records, so if a student goes, Essex Tech provides records, uh, uh, to them about, you know, here, in the records. Obviously, if they're in our local tech programs, they already got. Okay, um, but we're also going to comply with federal, the state of student record laws, okay, that's what we, in terms of sharing. The other thing though, that was required by Desi is the last sentence on the, on the second page, which is. Including the names of seven to eight grade students and their mailing address to NSAT, okay? That helps them improve this, okay, so, you know, um, we want, we want our kids to know about all of them, alright? Um, but that's literally, I wouldn't put something like that in any policy, unless I'm embarrassed by the state, okay? Um, because I wouldn't wanna share that information, but really, I should. Hands up, well, it's a, as you guys, uh, they're just cool, they gotta, um, use those, uh, online, you know, rules and, and, and say, oh. Um, next three laws, um. Oh, yeah, um, so, so the, the, the next, the top, the first one on the last page says to families, says that our policy. That we'll tell families we're sharing that information with Essex Tech, okay, if they don't want us to, take it off now. That feels a little better rather than sharing all of it still. Um, and then, um, we'll maintain doc, we'll maintain documentation of what students participate in tours, and then recruit, recruit activities. We already probably have those records ready to be due, but our protect. Um, the contractors who goes on tours, we know that because they're. They're going on, they're going on a field trip. The last piece is that each year, we'll complete and submit and analyze a station. That we're confirming to this policy, we, we were, we're conforming with the policy, okay? Again, I don't know of any other policy we've done.
So maybe a little history.
Yes.
Years ago, before Essex Tech was born.
Yeah.
The North Shore Vocational School was in the area. We were talking about building a school, that's when I got on that, my agent. And we were concerned because we were doing outreach to schools. Across Essex County and a little bit outside of Essex County. And many schools were refusing to allow us to build into the schools and give a presentation. So we struggled with that, knowing we were building this huge school, thinking we couldn't fill it up. Oh, I'm gonna be back, work against us. So we were doing outreach to schools and we were being refused access to students. So that, we had that conversation over and over for years, so to see that, I'm surprised it took this long, but when I read this, I'm like, oh, there you go. So now, I mean, we here take the position we want us to have access, but there were many school districts that didn't wanna pay the outer district tuition that were. More, were pursued into them to stay in their home school. So they figured if we don't allow them access and know about it, then they're not gonna go to the school, it's not across the city of town. That amount of money, they're afraid when we get one go. So my guess is that's where this will.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, yeah. We don't have that problem at Essex Tech.
No.
You know.
Well, we thought we were gonna have the problem of building school.
Every year.
And then the only other thing is the acumen is actually NSAT's, because they pass our annual skills, um. This week, that's the show, but it's, I've read this earlier, I thought it was going to be the same. It's kind of, it's not surprising, I'm like, I can see why they want me to attest it every year. They wanna make sure the school districts are around, that's the students, the way they should be known as well. I think that's probably a huge thing to, to develop, work for.
So like I said, um, oh, sorry. So, uh, other, other questions, you can, I'll just have a deadline here in a moment, but, or I think I know the question. So, uh, they give them the very first deadline, um, you don't need to vote on this tonight, you can do a second reading on, on the fifth, that's totally fine. I'm not really worried about who are coming after us on, on those dates, we submit right after that. So I'm flexible with that, but the school committee, if you want to, you know. You, you have to go, you have to go against your sort of typical way of doing this. Unless it doesn't care that you can't want, but I don't, I don't see it, I don't need to.
So first, I think we need a motion, I prefer we did not go against that policy. Giving them a new policy, which is, um. Important that people can see a new policy, because it's a subject, it's not like. Um, but we need motion to waive the actual reading of the policy.
I have a question on this. So, I'm, I'm already thinking the next motion, but from what I'm hearing from you. So you're willing to waive the reading of the policy, but you want more time for someone to know the laws, or?
It's in our path.
Right.
It's in our path, if people can read it.
Yeah.
I just do, I think it's.
Okay.
Needs to be read aloud.
Yeah.
That's what's.
Okay.
That's all.
Okay, so we have a motion.
Certainly.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
So are we making any changes to this?
No.
So I'm wondering why wait? I mean, that we need to waive, like, the rules. Oh. I mean, that we waive a second reading? I think I waive, I mean, that we waive the second reading of the policy in middle school pathway. We're not the same motion.
Can I ask a question before we move on to, um, opt-out procedures, is that, we have, I thought I.
Yeah, the, the, the first call on the last page, adopting out of us sending, uh, names and addresses to. Yes, so the families will be notified and advanced, so they have to.
I supported just as we're not making changes, other than that I have, and that's. Um, and, uh, and I would write out CBTB first before we use the F and CBTB before. Those are thinking things, but. If you're a high school CBTB.
Yeah, hold on. Are those whispering cages to me? Okay, I'm not CBT thing, that's no doubt, um, Mr. McKee, you say your suggestion out loud, please?
You never wanna put it said already, you just wanna state what it has.
Because, oh, I see, I couldn't find it.
You gotta project straight, and anyone use comments, like, sorry.
I'm seeing question.
Say it's manufacturing.
Great, thank you.
It's okay, I'll just do it from the recording. And you don't want.
Oh, vote, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I can't. But we just voted, our motion was that we could vote.
Right.
So now.
I mean, that we approve the policy that's presented tonight with a clean-up called Middle School Pathway Exploration Policy.
Thank you, second.
Okay, one second, maybe one second. I just have a question. So you said this is, that it has to be approved by Desi?
Yeah, or submitted to, I don't know, submitted, I'm not sure.
It's a significance to Desi for approval.
No, I, I, I'm not sure that they're approved, they need to have, have submitted. Alright, so, yeah, you, you have to go on that, because that's just, that's, that's a direct today given me. Oh, yes.
Thank you. Wait a second, if all in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye. Alright, so then we have two more, the first one is.
You have my original. You're making one.
Yeah, of course, and it's the one that has the red here, okay, I, oh, it's alright, on, on, we haven't gotten a, a, a file. So, so I don't, I don't, because, the only reason you don't have that is because MASC never waited on this. And we wanted to give the file number. So I don't, I haven't, I haven't experienced where you don't have a file number, so I, I can.
So it's like a subject, right?
Yeah, no, I, I, I inserted in a place I. Yeah, no, I, I, I inserted in, in a place I, I feel appropriate.
Sure.
Yeah, and they got the, the, the measure?
Yes.
Uh, yes, and that's. Yes, keep part of that.
So this is visitors to the schools, K I, which is a new M A S C policy, which in one, how a district can see is. Needed, much needed, um, the changes in the red reflect actually the version of the policy that was. Was being recommended to the full committee, was being programmed to be recommended, so that's. That will be, well, we changed it to make it clear, and then we added. So, um, and then we add, obviously, the rest to the other ones, um, so, this. I mean, it's pretty self-explanatory, it's talking about who can be in our schools and why. And what the, um, limit, limitations are as an. Okay, that would be in a business really long, so being in school and. Um, the important, one of the important things that we added, or the most important thing we added is that line in red, the graph, if a visitor violates this policy. The superintendent, the dirigent need, the team action to limit or vote, because it's a. Just by my, I may have seen.
Yeah, so, so just, just, so, so what you have here is, is all the black, is this M A S C's, uh, model policy. And then the reds, what the, is it, the, the minor changes that the, or visions that the, um, that the. For sort of forward, so you're voting on the, the one good change.
Yes, I think the only thing I'm, that's what I was pointing out, I would just get rid of the word rewritten. Because they are generating spells from two thousand and five.
And then we'll, we'll also add, you know, when you're adopted or revised, not, not just adopted. We'll make it consistent with how we do it.
So we're going to do the same thing with this policy.
Question about, like, say, library volunteers, would that?
That's legitimate business.
Yeah, so, in the first paragraph. So that's, okay, that, okay, so that would, that would be a visitor, is what you're saying.
If anyone who's not student, staff member, or.
Yeah, so what are, you know, we have volunteers, core check, right, is the.
Volunteers, yes, like library volunteers.
Right, should that be part of this policy?
No, because you have, you have policy.
I move that we need, um.
Wait.
Waive on the second reading of policy, K I.
Move the second meeting discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Yeah, that again.
So I said, this is reading.
I'm reading. I've never seen this before.
No, but, hold on, I, I want to, that, is that a motion to approve the policy?
No, no.
Okay, so just, it's just, it's a, it's a, it's a motion to waive.
We get backwards, we shouldn't get the motion waived at the first reading, we did, I mean, we did the motion.
We did, I did the motion to waive it, then this is.
And the meeting is correct.
Right, the reading, and then moving to vote, which is what we did on the last one, it's not the vote.
You're in to waive the second reading.
So you want to put in the opposite order?
Okay.
You waived the reading, now you want to waive the rule, that we have to have a second. Start over. Thank you.
Waive second reading.
First.
Waive the. I move that we waive first reading. And move on to a vote on policy, K I, visitor.
With first reading.
Same motion as we did the last.
Okay, I move that we waive the reading of the visitors to the schools, the policy came on. Waive the second reading and move to. Approve policy. Move to go to approve policy. So be executives, everyone in favor, say aye.
I move that we approve. How the K I visitor to the school.
I'm okay.
So this is the E C A B, and what I'm just giving you is, um, a, uh, so you. What there, there were, the programs are going to approve, or I think what I'm giving you right now. Okay, we, uh, there you go. Yeah, you have other ones? Right, um.
This is another new M A S C policy. Um, that is to buildings and grounds, which is meant to clarify until they're. You know, sort of, I think what's open under just go, and how people can build buildings and when, and who's in charge of that. Um, so, it's, it's, you know. Um, it's really about keeping our schools secure, um. Uh, ensuring of those without, um, authorized access or not, you know, are prohibited from the building. And the superintendent is, you know, is responsible.
Also prioritizes, um, school uses as well. Well, and the, the last piece, it also, it refers to these. Not only this and that list, but all playing, but a normal policy, obviously, with the. Very, very tight focus next one. Your buildings are tight focusing. Yeah, and, 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 well, well, a few others, but it's sort of like the overall statement of. Um, the purpose of our buildings, the primary purpose being, um, the work of school, the school, the school district. Uh, and it allows through this, you know, it references, um, um, community use. And the first other policy.
Alright, if there are any.
One thing to note, I'm still, I'm working on the.
Okay, that community building, finding some.
That last topic was doing a technical test under the motion that came from the. Uh, with activity accounts from East Block Elementary School, and the Veterans Memorial School, they still exist, so they want. So to combine the accounts and call it the, um, these veterans. These veterans through to the account. So, it was a motion to move to approve to the vote committee to combine those accounts and name it a new count. It might be helpful to know that it was five thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars in this bus here, or about eighteen hundred and sixty one dollars in veterans, so it would be a total fund of.
All in favor, say aye.
We talked about this, um, people, as I was referring about earlier, you know, we bought the Blackberry Building last spring, the purchase one included upgrades to the playground. We've been right on top of this project, modernizing while improving access and activity. Um, there's a new pathway to playground, the ground were raised about three feet, there'd be moves in boulders. Um, on the fencing, stat data as reported was, um, Monday, October one, and it's expected to be done in two or three weeks. Depending on the. We had a conversation about school buses, um, there's a request to bid for purchases for eleven new school buses instead of leasing. Um, these buses are less than thirty five thousand miles, and do not have more than, better enough, more than three years old. Currently, we have thirteen buses coming out, a three-year lease on June thirty, October twenty sixth. Um, there's a need to reduce some small buses. Um, we can do eleven buses bid for a six-year financing term. There's a claim to have an estimated savings of, um, hundred thirty five thousand dollars annually. Um, those, when they're completed on, um, if you remember on the committee, some of us that have been here for a long time know that we did this before. Used to own buses, and then came time, and when all the buses needed to be replaced, so then we went to leasing. Now here we are leasing, thanks for buying buses, my guess is ten years from now, if you do that, you're going to be talking about leasing again, but. Anyway, the topic is happening, and we're going to get some information on the added savings, um, at our next meeting. Also, um, Bill, Bill Melvin has been the advocate for, um, getting. Um, at the end possibly, to do small sports events and small events. There are issues that may come up with that, we're in negotiations, but, um, we are still moving forward with the conversation, and we have more information upon that. And the budget actually added District Two, we had seven point five million dollars. In the budget, the August estimate was about six point five million, but anticipated growth of two thousand. So three students waiting for a new or chain replacement, I just transportation. Be in an improved budget of one point two five million, with August estimate at one point three million. Um, we are over budget by about fifty four thousand dollars, just a reminder that we are working with the collaborative, that's a new adventure. Um, and it's too early to tell what, what, what you have.
New, I'm not, you know, I, you know, new adventure.
Adventure.
You know, adventure.
Well, it's something there that we're trying. So, um, even though we're over budget right now, it's kind of too early to tell, because more communities can sign on throughout the year, and which would be due savings, so. Uh, I wouldn't be alarmed by being over budget. Um, circuit break in the estimates in April of two thousand twenty five, the reimbursement was three, one, three point five million. Um, we actually ended up about four hundred forty two thousand over. Um, we are allocating one point three dollars from the two thousand twenty six circuit breaker, leaving a carryover of two point one million dollars. In a second, because we tapped into that four years ago.
So we had about three thousand dollars, we had two hundred thousand dollars more in twenty six, uh, circuit breaker reimbursement for, for getting that. Uh, for tuition that we thought we would, but we had, um, about, um, hundred thousand dollars less. In, um. In a, a circuit breaker reimbursement for, uh, transportation, right, because their, their reimbursement is at a lower percentage rate than, than we expected.
What was still ahead?
So that, so that, and part is because the, um, they reimbursed the transportation at a. Much lower rate a year ago, at point twenty five, and then they made it up to us at the end of that point twenty five, which was something. So, it's possible that saving process happened we get this year, at all, but just know that ultimately, combined circuit breaker reimbursement, the transportation.
And we discussed about health insurance, we have eleven new physicians this year, um, and that combined, there's open enrollment changes at LEED, there's a. Three hundred and thirty nine thousand dollar impact on our budget, um, impacted the special education positions. Um, in the world contracting health, so we brought more services to our district, but that will foster health insurance. Which is a good thing. And then budget transfers, we improved those, and, um. Given set agenda, great, which means office advice. We placed stage lighting system, which will be no terms deductible, to pay for, and also to pay for new supervisors contract with the W N C A. And those psychological services that last cash.
Okay, and we have some grants for the set, um, I move that we accepted this for your twenty six F C two point one seven. And a fair share earmark O'Malley Middle School grant, an amount of one hundred thousand dollars, and the. This one year, two thousand twenty six, F C two five one seven, and a fair share earmark. Foster High School grant, an amount of one hundred thousand.
So, these are both earmarks that came from the state budget, state of like, what is the budget? That were, um, that came our way because they, uh, the fantastic work and leadership from. Uh, President Ann Martin Frante and Senator Rich Tar. Um, they both advocated for these, on their sides of the aisle, and their, in their, uh, house, or center. Um, we're together, they always do work together on it, and they, uh, it's where our school, they're sitting, um. Uh, Sarah Charles, or the lead on the O'Malley Middle School Grant, a hundred thousand dollars. Um, that is for, um, is simply for capital and equipment, capital group is a. Okay, hundred thousand dollars for capital, which is kind of difficult. Because it's not really enough to do any building, that's our stuff, and, um, and we're not, we don't really have capital repairs. Um, in the science center itself, so we're working, we are working, we'll continue to work with, um. Um, Amy Donnelly, Dave Brown, and Mike Titus, to figure out what's the equipment that would be beneficial. Um, but can, also can't, can't be a third of all. Um, the tech, um, the language there, again, this was support led by Martin Frante. Um, it's more, uh, Senator Tar, um. Uh, it's a little more wide open, it says, uh, to support our Boston High School C B T programs, including medical assisting, but not limited to. Okay, so it's, it's all mentioned specifically. It's, it's, um, it's, uh, it's more wide open. Um, and Brenda has, um, already, um, and had, you know, had, had in place, sort of. Uh, of all the things that we are, want to do, or can do, or need to do at, at VOTech. Um, has a nice list of things that add hundred thousand dollars, uh, which will, will run by all of you through B and F, okay? Um, but it's things from, um, you know, uh, equipment, like simulators, uh, medical assisting, uh, programmable mannequin type thing. Um, uh, the carpentry, um, uh. A certification, um, and, uh, politics certification, I don't know what that is. Um, and then, uh, possibly, um, a folding gate. Um, uh, security, uh, upgrade for auto shop, you know, the notion that the auto shop. Most days, many days, that big garage doors open, opens, open door at the school, okay? Um, uh, having a big gate in front of it that keep people out. Uh, I'm also good at. So those are just some ideas. We'll, we'll go through B and F, uh, to work, work, you know, work with you through B and F. Uh, get your approval on those specific expenditures. Uh, a little bit behind, um, the process on. But also, but, 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 but the, the big news there is great work, deeply appreciate the leadership and support. Of Anmark President and Anmark Frante, man, it's. Reason to talk, to talk to, uh, to Fair Share, um, it's from the revenue generated by the Fair Share Amendment. Um, that has to go with new expenditures in, uh, finance position. And then.
Further discussion. I move that we accept the fiscal year twenty six C T E frameworks and competency based implementation. Grant in the amount of three thousand nine hundred and twenty five dollars.
So it's going to pay for, um, some committee work with. From our C V T teachers and our math department. It's been noticed that, um, in particular in the, the data of our math scores in the C, C V T E program need to rise. So they're going to collaborate to bring in more, uh, math curriculum embedded into the C V T. Curriculum. Yeah.